I would like to call the Tuesday, May 11th, Board of Education meeting to order and ask Mr. Geisfeldt to call the roll.
Mrs. McKenna?
Here.
Mrs. Trent?
Here.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
And Mr. McKenzie?
Here.
Mr. Geisfeldt, are there any additions to our agenda?
There are. There is an addendum in front of you for items VB, action item for restrooms, and item 9C2, there are M, there are two resignations.
I'd like to move to approve the agenda as amended. Do you have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Lauren.
Any discussion? Mr. Geisfeldt?
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
And Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried.
All right. Number three, can I ask someone to read that will make the nomination, read the motion to go into executive session?
I would like to move to go into executive session in accordance with ORC 12122G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, and compensation of public employees in the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, and three, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, and two, five, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
And Mr. McKenzie?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And so the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So will you please join us?
My pledge of allegiance, unified in the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got the approval of the minutes. We've got two sets of minutes to approve, April 13th and April 28th. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
And a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, Mr. Geisfeld? Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Dries?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. McKenzie? Aye, motion carried. And we have 5B, an action item, and that is restrooms. So I know that the board recognizes that we have recently received a notice from the city regarding the signage for some of our restroom facilities. So we need to respond tonight to the city's notice, and it's important for us to do that during a public meeting. So I'm wondering, is there anybody that would like to get us started?
I have a resolution that I would like for the board to consider, and I would like to read that for everyone now. Whereas following the success of the combined operating levy and bond issue in November 2017, the Upper Arlington City School District was able to begin the first phase of the community-developed master plan, which included rebuilding the high school and rebuilding or renovating all five elementary schools to address the aging building systems and add the needed space to accommodate projected enrollment growth. Whereover, or I'm sorry, whereas over the next approximately 15 months, the design phase for the project included community input with seven community-wide meetings, six building steering committees comprised of community and staff members, six neighbor communities of residents living in the closest proximity to the buildings, and a green team of community volunteers with an interest in exploring environmental best practices for the new renovated buildings. Whereas, the board strives in its leadership to make decisions grounded in our mission, our vision, and three core values. Our mission: challenge and support every student every step of the way. Our vision: uniquely accomplish students prepared to serve, lead, and succeed. Our values: start with heart, strengthen team, and contagious drive. Whereas, the decisions made surrounding the district's current construction projects have kept those core values in mind, along with our longstanding philosophy of educating and supporting the whole child. Whereas, when it comes to supporting the whole child, student safety and emotional well-being are top priorities. Private, gender-neutral restrooms were prioritized for all of the school buildings for several reasons. The primary reason was to provide students with more privacy while using the restroom. Instead of going into a room with a row of stalls that are open on the bottom and the top, the new design has separate private toilet rooms with full floor-to-ceiling walls and a full locking door. Because they are completely private individual, I'm sorry, because they are completely private individual toilet rooms, they can be used by any student. There is greater potty parity as well, without longer lines for one gender than the other. The all-gender design is also more practical and safer. It is easier for staff to supervise students when all of the students are in the same general area, which is of course not possible when students leave to go to two separate restroom areas. And when we have students who are questioning their assigned gender or sex, or who identify differently than their assigned gender or sex, they are able to use the restroom without added stress for themselves or their classmates. Whereas, the board believes that having private, all-gendered restrooms is the right choice for our students and the district because the restrooms are practical, safe, and grounded in the mission of Upper Arlington Schools and its commitment to support the whole child. Whereas, the toilet rooms, as designed, have been constructed in accordance with Ohio's Building Code, and there have not been any citations issued with regard to the construction of the toilet rooms. Whereas, the city of Upper Arlington has recently issued adjudication letters disapproving the district's submitted plans to the extent they included signage of certain single occupant toilet rooms as all-gender. Along with the adjudication letter received on April 30th, 2021, the board received correction letters from the city of Upper Arlington's chief building official and plans examiner directing the school district to designate separate toilet facilities for male and female use. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education as follows. One, having all-gendered restrooms is the right choice for our students, and such restrooms are consistent with the law. Because the city issued a directive on April 30th, 2021, the board will comply with the directive but will maintain its current appeal of the Windermere Elementary application, pending in the 10th District Court of Appeals, as is the board's legal right. The board directs the superintendent, treasurer, and chief operating officer to perform those tasks necessary to comply with the city's directives regarding gender-specific restroom signage issued on April 30th, 2021. Should all gender restrooms at Windermere Elementary be affirmed on appeal, then the board directs the superintendent and chief operating officer to resubmit applications for all gender restrooms to the city for all other school buildings in the district. The board will continue to prioritize student safety and emotional well-being and support of the whole child, which with regard to restroom use means accommodating those students who consistently and uniformly assert a gender identity different from the student's sex assigned at birth. These students may continue to use the restroom for the gender with which they identify in accordance with board policy and Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1991. accordance with board policy in Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. The board directs the superintendent and chief operating officer to incorporate all-gender restrooms within the district's school buildings to the greatest extent permissible under the law, with the approval required by the city of Upper Arlington and consistent with any and all decisions from appeals. The board directs its staff to comply with Board Policy 5517, anti-harassment; Board Policy 5517.01, bullying and other forms of aggressive behavior; and Title IX as it implements the directives in this resolution, including providing those legal accommodations as provided under the law to the district's transgendered students. The board directs the superintendent to update the school district community regarding this action in his Friday update.
Can I get a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Well, before Andy calls the rolls, does anybody have any discussion items, or does anybody want to talk about this?
I'm happy to make a comment about it. I know the community and the district has been going through the process of looking at our bathrooms. My only wish is I wish we could take every one of you in to show you exactly what these bathrooms are. They are private bathrooms for individuals, and I do believe that it is a safe protocol, and it allows our teachers to watch our children from the safety of a hallway rather than the closed door of a bathroom. Unfortunately, because of COVID and because of our current situation, we hope to have these tours open for people to actually see these bathrooms. I'm very hopeful that the 10th District Court of Appeals will approve the Windermere appeal and that we can move on from this issue and get back on education.
I would like to approach this, I guess, I totally agree with what Nancy said, by the way, and thank you for that. I would like to approach this from a much larger scale. What this says to me is we have some disconnects within our community about accepting people that are different from perhaps who we are. This I find extremely troubling, and, okay, I guess they like that. I find it very troubling, not only for those of us who are older in this community, who believed in something bigger that our community could do. We have lots of forward momentum about acceptance and inclusion and diversity, and we really all need to pull together as a community and recognize differences are what make this country and this community special. So I'm very troubled, again, to say that word three times, that we have to take this step at this point, but I'm hopeful that it will be a short-term step to ultimately get to what is best for all of our kids in all different areas, all different families, all different lifestyles, all different interests, because they're going to be the ones that live with the decisions that we make.
Thank you, Lori, and thank you, Nancy. This is very personal, those of us who've had children go through the schools. I know I've talked to my daughter and son about it, and they both understand what is so important about this. And my daughter said, "Mom, I would never go to the bathroom because that's where the bullies are there." We have an opportunity to create spaces where bullying is not the norm, that bullying is not accepted, that the expected behavior of going to the boys' room isn't that song that's probably going through your head right now, "Smoking in the Boys' Room," that the expected behavior isn't that you go to the restroom to get away from the teacher's eyes, to create a space where behavior problems are the norm, but to have a space where, literally, you're going to use the restroom for its purpose and then going about your business. That's all anyone wants. The likelihood of success, as I see it, with the Windermere all-gender restrooms at the 10th District Court of Appeals helps me hear the motion that you've made and understand that my goal is certainly what I expect to happen is to have the all-gender restrooms, which are completely within the law, completely within code, and are already accepted in Grandview and the norm in the building in Grandview, which last I heard is not very far from Upper Arlington. That this has been accepted, this will come to pass, but because of the city coming to us, it doesn't make sense at this time for us to have any kind of legal action or waste any money on lawyers because we're going ultimately, I believe, to prevail in the Windermere case, and that will bring an expectation of all of the cases following. The city has gone shoulder to shoulder with us to the Board of Building Appeals, and they have expressed to us that they are very confident that this is not a safety issue, but we have a difference of opinion on what the code does and does not say. I'm sure that all of you have had children in your neighborhood, or your friends, your children's friends who have grown up, know people who have come out as transgender, and it's my hope that we accept people for who they are, the entirety of who they are, and not only accept them as they fit into what we say is acceptable for them. I am for the well-being of all of our students and for creating a culture where it's expected that there will not be bullying, that it's expected that there will be the ability to have supervision, the way that our new bathrooms are designed. That's all that I have. Thank you.
I would, I mean, I guess I would just like to say that I'm disappointed that the city does not interpret the code the same way that we do. This is definitely not the outcome I think any of us were hoping for, but it has, we still have the one, our last, you know, avenue with the appeal with Windermere, and we are really hopeful that that is a positive outcome for our district. We are really trying to, I think, fight this, what I believe to be good fight in the most fiscally responsible way possible. We have spent a lot of time, money, effort, to try and do what we, as a board, believe is in the best interest of our students, that is the safest, that is the most inclusive, caring, thoughtful way, what's been deemed to be educationally the best. So I guess I would just say that I'm disappointed that this is the outcome that we're at right now would be a really big understatement, and I think we really hope that we are able to move forward in a different direction once we hear the appeal about Windermere.
So, yeah, I guess I'd like to also say that we certainly have a difference of opinion with the city, and, you know, personally, I guess I would like to say I'm angry with it, with the decision, and I'm a little confused, but I think that people can see that this resolution from this board is that we will respect the authority of the city, but that we have a difference of opinion. So if anyone else has a comment, if not, I'm just going to ask Andy to call the roll. Anybody else have anything to say? Andy, would you please call the roll on this board resolution?
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. Dries? Mr. McKenzie?
Aye, motion carried. All right, our next order of business is to hear from our student council representatives. Is there anyone here from student council? Come on up and speak with us. Glad to have you tonight.
Hi, I'm the Communications Co-Chair Lucy DeVita.
Hi, I'm Student Council Co-President Claire Kramer.
We're going to share some of our events from second semester this evening. Typically, our big winter initiative is our annual Change to Make a Change campaign. We hold competitions among classrooms to see which room can donate the most change to help a local nonprofit agency. Over the years, we've been able to collect over $20,000 to donate to community organizations. While we didn't do this project in 2021 because of safety protocols, we plan to bring it back in 2022.
We use some of our funds to pass out giveaway items to students during the year. Students look forward to receiving their spring break sunglasses to kick off their break. We pass out individually-wrapped sunglasses on the Thursday before break. In the midst of all the changes this year, we wanted to do something to thank our teachers, counselors, and paraprofessionals for their flexibility. Student council reps wrote personal notes to every teacher and counselor in the building and delivered them in March, along with cookies prepared by our nutrition services. We also mailed personal notes home to our online academy teachers and counselors.
Every April, we look forward to treating our administrative professionals, to lunch to thank them for everything they do to keep our building running smoothly. This year, we delivered pots of fancy's to brighten up their desks. We have a couple more groups that we're working on honoring later this month, our custodial staff and our building principals. On another note, since 2005, Student Council has awarded a media scholarship to remember the legacy of former mass media teacher Joe Conley. This year, the award was given to Daphne and Kaya Sehan. They will each receive a $250 tuition award to the university of choice.
As we end our year, we're going to celebrate our senior send-off with our Student Council members on Thursday. Senior Student Council members receive a red, white, and blue cord to wear on graduation, along with a small gift to thank them for their service. Thanks for asking Mr. Sherwood up to during our second semester. Are there any questions?
Thanks for coming. We just love seeing you guys. It's been a while.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. With all that you have done, it's amazing. With the COVID year and all that, you've really done a lot and appreciate your service on the student council. So thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
So I do have a question. I'd be interested to know, like, how many of the student population, like, participate in these activities? You know, and like, kind of, what is that looking like over the years? Is it like 15%? Or maybe you don't know, but...
I'd say we get a large amount of our students that participate in it. Our Change to Make a Change is very successful, unfortunately.
Like every classroom.
Yeah, so we usually make it a competition. We go to all the six period classes in the school, and we usually collect money. Obviously, the safety concern this year being the collecting of money, but we get lots of competition through that, so it's definitely our most successful event. The sunglasses, I think this year we ordered how many?
A couple thousand?
Yeah, a couple thousand.
One for each kid.
You could say it's pretty popular, that students really enjoy getting their sunglasses around spring break. Usually, we also do, like, ice cream, so we'll hand out ice cream. These are all just from the wonderful funds the Student Council gets from fundraising, but I would say we get a good amount of student participation in what we do.
That's great. Thank you.
I would just want to say thank you, guys. I think it was probably this year specifically to have that, like, positive and extra stuff, given how crazy of a year it's been. It's really very impressive, and, you know, I think it did not go unnoticed, and I have a freshman, and like, just all the little things that Student Council provides, I think, you know, really helped to solidify that school community, especially in a year when they weren't in the school for most of the year. So thank you so much for your time and effort.
Where are you guys going to school? Where are you guys headed?
I'm going to the University of Cincinnati.
I'm going to Whittenburg University to play field hockey.
You guys, congratulations, and best of luck, too.
Good luck to you.
All right, Dr. Emhoff, you're up.
Okay, great to be here tonight. As normal, we're going to start with some of the great things going on in the school district. First, we're saying goodbye to some folks, and this is the time of year where we celebrate our retirees, and we have a big group this year. So due to all of the COVID restrictions, we aren't able to bring them all here, but I want to say a special thanks to Scott and Carol. So as the board president and vice president, we will all be going to these folks and thanking them on behalf of the board and delivering the retirement bell to them, and so we're looking forward to doing that in the very near future. And so, again, this is just, and I don't know who's, this is a wonderful group of folks, and we're certainly going to miss them, and they just represent some of the best of the best. And so this is always a bittersweet time of year as we say goodbye to folks, but we're also just very, very happy for them as they embark upon the next challenges and adventures in their lives. One of the other things that is exciting this time of year, and we just experienced it yesterday, this is golden apple season. And so before we talk about golden apple, always an important point to stop and just say thank you to the Upper Arlington Civic Association. I think just one of the most amazing groups in our community, and they do so much for us, and we are so thrilled that they take the time every year to recognize our educators. There were over 450 nominations from our, from our community this year, and we spent yesterday going building to building. Thank you, Carol, for being a part of the traveling roadshow with all of the yellow jackets. It was a great day. And so the winners for this year, Kristen Buggnix, the media specialist at Tremont, Sarah Oberlin, a 4-5 teacher at Wickliffe, Jennifer Barrow, a first-grade teacher at Windermere, Tina Farbizo, a school counselor at Hastings, Dr. Kathy Moore, a college counselor at the high school, Gina Rancatelli, our COVID nurse coordinator, Irene Hunt, our director of nutritional services, Sarah Capple, an intervention specialist at Greensview, Karen Wildman, a first-grade teacher at Barrington, and Darian House, an intervention specialist at Jones. So just thanks to all of these folks, and congratulations. And one of the special parts of the day, this is a total surprise, as you know, and so you see a bunch of people in the yellow jackets, and the other thing you see, all of these folks had members of their family there, and so they did not know that. And so it was just, it was just a great time to celebrate with just wonderful members of our staff. So we're also celebrating the class of 2021. We're going to have 475 graduates. You see 100 members of the National Honor Society, 140 members of the Cum Laude Society, and 16 presidents of volunteer service award recipients, and we're so excited that we get to have a graduation ceremony. And so Ohio State has cleared us, and we're going to be back at the Schottenstein Center Sunday, May 30th, at 9:30 a.m. And as you recall, last year, the class of 2020 wanted to have a parade through Upper Arlington, and on that day, we all predicted, it was so popular, that this may become something that happens on an annual basis. And that is true. The class of 2021, as we were planning all the activities, it was very important to them that we have a parade, and so for the second year in a row, we will have a parade. That'll start at... so for the second year in a row, we will have a parade. That'll start at 11:45, so right after the graduation ceremony. Just so all the members of the board know, Karen sent you an email with the information our seniors received, which outlines all of the procedures from Ohio State that we need to follow for the ceremony. And we thought you should each have that in case you get questions from members of our community. So a couple of update items I will move into. First, and this is really, really good news. We're going to start with a COVID update, and we've done this, obviously, every month for over a year. But if you go to the next slide, look at the current numbers. And we have not seen numbers this, this, this low for a long, long time. And so we are just really, really pleased with this, and really, really hopeful that we're getting closer and closer to being back to normal. The other thing we're excited about in a meeting this morning with public health officials is that it appears that ages 12 and older are going to be cleared for vaccines in Ohio as early as Thursday. So we have already reached out to Nationwide Children's Hospital, and they are going to be offering vaccine clinics again within the schools. And so as soon as we have dates for that, we will make that available to our families. And so we will be happy to do that. The other thing that public health told us today is they do not anticipate updating any of their health orders before the end of this school year. So we heard that from them as well this morning. So that is the end of my update. Before I pass it off to Keith, who has our teaching and learning update, are there any questions from the Board of Education about our COVID-19 numbers or graduation?
Can you show the COVID-19 numbers back again? That was so nice.
I know. I'd just like to look at that slide for a while. That's, as you know, that's fantastic news. Fantastic news. Okay. I'd like to introduce our chief academic officer, Mr. Keith Pomeroy, who has our teaching and learning update. Keith, thanks for being here.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here. Excited to share a set of information, since my slideshow comes up here. Just going to take it a moment. There it goes. Good. Actually, Karen, I think I can do this from here. We'll see. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Thank you for having me. I actually am, I'm really excited to be here and talk about a series of data with you. Dr. Yaki got to share data with you earlier this year. That was really focused on our younger learners. This gives me the opportunity to share information around our older learners and how our students are doing as they go through Upper Arlington schools. These nine tiles kind of lay out the data that I'm going to talk through. Not going to read them to you. This is, though, all about challenging and supporting every student every step of the way, and how we create uniquely accomplished students who are prepared to serve, lead, and succeed. I just want to point out along the way as well, the last tile there is the U.S. News and World Report. We have the opportunity, I think, that release, the U.S. News and World Report ranking of high schools, that release actually aligns well with data we were intending to share with you anyway. And I think it gives us a good opportunity to kind of clear up as well some of the misconceptions you're going to see in that data. So we'll walk you through all this set of data. And I'm going to kind of go through it pretty quickly. Feel free to stop me if you want. But I'll leave space at the end to ask questions as well to go through some of that. So I'll go through it quickly if it is, because I just want to. Okay. You're going to hear us talk about similar districts, and I thought it was important for you to understand what our similar districts are. The similar districts are defined by the Ohio Department of Education. And these are kind of the factors that they use to determine who our similar districts are. Along the way, I'm going to share who those similar districts are. They're available at that website that is listed as well. These are actually in order of the most similar to the least similar within those 20. So there are 20 every year of our similar districts, and they rank them in order of similarity based on the criteria you saw before. There is some variation in this list every year, but they tend to stay fairly similar year to year. That list doesn't change significantly, but you will see small changes year to year. But that is our similar district list from Ohio Department of Education. So we're going to start with graduation rate. And as we look at the graduation rate, what you're going to see is that our graduation rate stays high all the way through. And when you see us in comparison to our similar districts, you're going to see where that graduation rate sits. I'm going to point out one year within this. Maybe. There we go. In the year, for the class of 2019, you'll see that 95.8. What you'll see in that, within that year, is we had a higher number of students in the class of 2019 who deferred graduation in order to access special education programming and resources. So these children will graduate, but legally, these children can continue to defer that graduation up until age 21. So in the year of 2019, that graduating class, we have students who are still here. Some will graduate this year. Some may graduate next year. But that is just a higher number of our students deferring that graduation in order to continue to receive services. Okay. Elementary literacy. As we look at this data, one thing we want you to know is we start in the year 1516. I'm going to just keep doing this lean. There we go. When we look at 1516, the reason we highlight 1516 there is that is the year that a state revised our assessments in the state of Ohio. So for those of us who've been doing this for a long time, we were on the park assessments, and then we switched to the air assessments. But that's a change in the state assessments. So what you can see there when you look at our elementary literacy is that we continue to perform high. We also, we continue to perform above our similar districts in many cases, but we're, we're in a close space there with our similar districts. You'll also notice in the note, this is the rate of proficiency or higher. So there are students who can, if you're familiar with the third grade guarantee, there are students who can reach a promotion score that is not at the proficient level. No students have been retained for not meeting a promotion score. We'll continue to see that. But we're always going to pay attention to that proficient or higher number to see what we're seeing in the data in order to... So the promotion score is slightly lower, and you'll see it listed here. You can reach promotion with a 683. Proficient is 700. So there's a small number in between those two. So it's possible to reach a promotion score without being proficient. Okay, PSAT data. So as we look at the PSAT data... When we look at PSAT data, you're going to see, again, there are adjustment timeframes in that PSAT data. So in 2014, 2015, you switch to 2015, 2016. PSAT made adjustments to their systems. What you're going to notice within this, then, is there's a trend of lower at 2016, 2017 across the board. But if you look at us in comparison to the state average and the national average, you're going to see this as higher. But the other thing that you're going to notice is you're going to hear me talk over and over again about us increasing access. So one thing that we've done is we are giving access to the PSAT for all of our 11th graders and all of our 10th graders. This gives us the opportunity for our students to start to benchmark themselves and see if they're college-ready. It gives us information back about how they're doing. This is preparation for their next steps beyond. And this is, the more we can increase access, the better that is for our children. So you're going to see us continually increase that access. There we go. All right. So then SAT scores. As we follow up the PSAT with the SAT, just nice and slow for me. Okay. So in this case, you're going to see, there is a change to the scoring system within the SAT. You'll see our scores climbing. But in 2016, that is the last year where it's out of 2,400 points. And then they make a change in 2017 and change the scoring system to be out of 1,600. So at that point, what you're going to see is all of the districts reorienting, reorienting their scores. And then you'll see us start to climb a bit there, but we're going to see that on a steady rise. I'm going to come back to SAT data later as we look at the U.S. News and World Report. You're going to see me come back and look at this SAT data again. Okay. ACT scores. What you're going to see here, again, you're going to hear me talk about access for our kids when I talk about this. When you look at our ACT scores year over year, you can see those scores increasing up until the class of 2017. And then you see that score drop a little bit. That score dropped a little bit across the board because the state now provided in 2018, access to ACT for all juniors in the state, paid for by the state. So this for us, anytime we can provide more access, that is a good opportunity for our kids. This adjustment, while we saw a slight decrease, what you saw among other districts is a larger increase or a larger decrease in their number. So 25.4, you see that come down because you have increased access significantly. The entire junior class is taking the ACT. We believe that's good for our students across the board. The more opportunities they have to benchmark whether they're prepared for their next steps, the more that's going to help us. And then you start to see that climb. So this is very similar to what we're seeing with other districts. But that increased access, we see as critically important for our kids. AP and IB, student enrollment and passage. So in these numbers, what I want to walk through is you're going to see many districts have AP or IB. We have AP and IB. So what has happened over time is we've been able, you can see those numbers, the combined enrollment number. If you look at the line that says combined enrollment, you'll see that number increasing. It's kind of staying steady where it is within a little bit from 2016 on. But we've seen that AP and IB enrollment change a little bit. Those numbers, just so you know, when you look at 2019 and 2020, and it says AP enrollment 711, that means 711 unique kids took AP offerings. And then when it says IB enrollment, there are 416 unique kids who took IB enrollment. There is some overlap between those two. Some of the kids who took AP also took IB. So there is some overlap between those two. But we think this is important because AP enrollment and IB enrollment, both of those, if you score at a high enough level, those are, those are going to be accepted at most schools if you're scoring a three or a four. And those, that's actual college credit moving with you. For those of us who've had kids who go to college and have taken AP or IB offerings, that is a very good thing. So that's, these are access options that we have. Again, notice here, though, we are going, you're going to hear me also go back to, we provide choice for our kids. So we are giving them choice. We're giving them options that are AP and IB options. In many cases, you'll see districts do one or the other. I think this is going to be the first time where my talking is not a thing that slows us down. It's the clicking that slows us down. Karen, if it's not moving, do you mind clicking for me? There you go. Okay. Remedial coursework. This is, this is a really important slide, so I want you to pay close attention to this. You're going to hear me talk about how we increase our numbers over and over again. This is going to be the only slide you hear me talk about decreasing our numbers. What this means is, this is about our students going to college and taking remedial coursework while they're at college. So in this number, when you start to look at it, and Karen, if you could click three steps forward. So what you're going to see in 2017, 2018, and 2019, you see that number decreasing. So 13%, 10%, 4%. 4% of our kids taking remedial coursework from the class of 2019. When I look at remedial coursework among other schools, other schools may be seeing a decreasing trend as well, but not at the rate that ours is decreasing. So this says to me that our kids, when they're going to college, are highly successful. That's a really good sign for what we're seeing. We want that number to continue to climb. Okay, let's go to the next one. Oh, performance index. Okay. I'm going to read every aspect of this slide and make sure that you are quizzed and understand every aspect of what's on this slide. No, I'm going to give you, this performance index is calculated by the state is a total measure of 120 points. I'm not going to read this entire slide to you, but basically, if you look at the weighted points, you are getting credit for how your kids perform on tests given by the state. And each one kind of has a weighted value. One thing that I think is critically important to understand when you look at the performance index, as it is calculated by the state, is that currently, the Ohio Department of Education counts each student who opts out of a test as a zero and considers that a failing grade. So any of our families that choose to opt out in order to not have their child participate in that rate, the state is calculating that as a zero. I believe this would be a more fair measure if only those students who took the test were counted into that measure. But it's important for you to know that that's part of this measurement. If we'll go forward one. Okay. So when you look at 2016, one more step, Karen, I think. Yep, okay. So 2016, again, I start with that because it's the revised assessment. When we switch assessments from the park to the air assessment, this is the most fair measure. So you'll see an adjustment happen when that, when you switch to the performance index in 2016 on the new assessments. And you'll see that at a 101.02. You'll see a drop in 2017. But then you'll see that start to climb again, and you'll see the state rankings start to climb again. All of these measures, we're looking at multiple measures, look at what our kids need and how we're doing for our kids. While we're not going to chase one measure, we're going to pay attention to what we're seeing within those measures. And we are always going to be looking for, how do we support our kids in every way possible, and what within it gives us reason to consider what we're doing. Again, take into account, any opt-out in this space is being counted as a zero in our performance index. Okay, let's go to the next one. Okay, then, the last part that I want to look at is the U.S. News and World Report. And I'm really going to, these are the areas that they focus in on, and I want to focus in on two areas here. College readiness at 30%, and then college curriculum, curriculum breadth at 10%. That, those really are AP and IB measures. So 40% of this calculation is on AP and IB measures within the system. So we thought it would be good to give an example. So if I could go to the next one, Karen. Bexley was the highest rated high school in this area. They are also the second closest district in terms of our similar districts. And when we look at our data side by side with Bexley, you see a couple of things. And I'm going to go back. There, there are lots of these types of measures, like the U.S. News and World Reports out there. There are lots of different ways to rank different things, and there are different methods for doing this. You know, as we're making decisions about our kids, we tend not to chase one measure. You can chase a measure if you want to, and, and there are districts who align their approach to that. We think it's best to pay attention to what's best for our kids, pay attention to what we're learning from all the different measures that are out there. But we, we don't tend to chase one, because also, when you chase one, they tend to change the way that is measured, and then you're chasing something else. But we can move forward along the way with whatever we need to do to support our kids. And we're going to try and gather information from that all along. So if we look at this graduation rate between Bexley and Upper Arlington, so Bexley being number four, and we're currently ranked number 36 in the state, our graduation rate is exactly the same. When we look at reading proficiency, their, their reading proficiency is one point higher than ours. Yet when we look at mathematics proficiency, our rate is four points higher than theirs. And then when you look at our SAT composite, so a measure that would tell us, are our kids prepared to go to college, we're scoring 31 points higher than Bexley on our SAT measure. So when you then get down to the 40% measurement within, and this next part of the slide can be very confusing, so I'm going to walk you through it a little bit, and then I'm going to, you know, take questions along the way. Those last two measures look at the percent of your seniors who took at least one AP exam. So the percent of your senior class, by the time they graduated, anywhere within their career, did they take one AP exam? You can see that Bexley is at a 90% on that, and we're currently at a 67%. That 67% is only our AP students right now. If you were to add IB in, that percentage is a little bit higher. This only displays AP against AP. And then the last measure there is the percent of our seniors in the class of 2019 who passed at least one AP exam. So 80% of Bexley seniors passed one AP exam. And 59% of our entire senior class passed one AP exam. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to... All right, I'm going to, I'm going to dig in on those two numbers, because this is confusing people. So, one thing I want to say is, in order to compare these, so that rate of passage compared to the rate of taking a test, if we were to get our percentage up to 90%, and these numbers held true in terms of our, our current rate of passage there, you would expect that if we had 90% taking one AP exam, our rate of passage, if you, if all stayed consistent with what is there, we would have higher than 80% of our senior class passing an AP exam. So, if all of that held true, that would be the case. And you see that note at the bottom, we're saying that our combined passage rate for AP and IB in the 2018-19 school year was 79%. We tend to stay right around 80%. That is 80% of all the tests given in that year. This measure is during your entire career, did you take one AP test, and did you pass one AP test? Now, in this case, when you compare Bexley to Upper Arlington, there are lots of districts that incentivize, some districts incentivize to move up on these lists, some do it for other reasons, that's not what I'm saying Bexley is doing. But, one of the ways that Bexley incentivizes is they pay for all the AP tests for their students. So, their students are taking those AP tests because they're paying for those. If they believe if they weren't paying for them, that would reduce their rate, had a conversation with Bexley, and they believe that if they weren't paying for those tests, that's going to reduce their rate, the students are doing that. Other districts do other things like require one AP test in your career, just offer different options. We are currently not paying for AP exam or any of those things. So, last point that I'm going to make, and then I'll, I'll take questions. If this measure is about whether we're preparing our kids for success as we move forward, whether we're doing what we need to do to support our children, our remediation rates are going down at a significant level. Our enrollment in college, two years after graduation, in universities, two years after graduation, is 91%. Our remediation free scores during your high school career are going up, which means our kids are performing well. Our students are enrolling in universities at a higher rate than every one of the top 20 high schools, according to Performance Index in the state of Ohio, according to the Ohio Department of Higher Education. By all of those measures, we're increasing access, and our kids are highly successful along the way. So, as you look at all of this data, we are seeing those key points, and yet, we're still going to look at this data and say, what are the structures that we put in place to support our kids? So, last thing I'm going to say about that is, you'll hear us talk about, and some of you've heard us go on and on and on about this, multi-tiered systems of support. How do we know how a kid is doing, and what supports can we put in place? That means for kids who need extension, and that means for kids who need support, it means both. So, there is evidence that our teachers and our buildings are providing these supports, our administrators are providing supports. Our kids are successful when they leave us. They are highly successful when they leave us. US News and World Reports is not seeing that the way we are, because they're taking 40% of their measure and making it about these things. But, across the board, this data is showing significant success by our students when they leave us. Okay, with that, I'll take questions, sorry. I got a little worked up.
Who wants to start?
Okay, I'll ask. So, outstanding presentation.
Very good.
So, how are we going to get this word out?
You know, I think we need to continue to communicate the full measures of, of what it looks like to be successful, and we need to pay close attention, and we just need to find more ways to share that information along the way. You know, as we come back and measure all things that we believe matter in the quality profile, we'll make sure that you're updated on this information as well, so that you know how our kids are performing as they move forward.
So, the percent of seniors who took at least one AP exam in Upper Arlington in their career was 67%. Is that correct?
Yes, in the class of 2019, yes.
In the class, okay. So, how many students in the class of 2019 took at least one IB exam? Do we know that percentage, or, I mean?
Seven. Seven percent of our, seven percent.
Seven additional percent.
Are not represented in the IB.
There, yeah. Okay.
But, that's additional students, so those students may have taken, some of those students may have taken an AP exam.
Yeah.
But, you would get an additional 7% on top of the 67% if you added students who only took IB exams and no AP.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, that's, okay.
That gets kind of crazy in parsing that data out.
Each family and each student are rational economic actors, and our proximity to Ohio State University and the ability to participate in the academy program there.
Good question.
Can sometimes, if you want to go to Ohio State or any, any place in Ohio, your Ohio State credit will go with you 100%.
Right.
A, a college may or may not accept an, an AP or an IB. So, our, our students may have an incentive to take a course at our, our neighbor college. And there, I don't see any educational reason why we would want to steer students to take an AP class when they're ready for college-level classes in order to increase our ratings.
Right, so, we have seen, just, college credit plus is what you're speaking of, and so, the opportunity for a student to take a college-level course for credit, that credit will transfer and is available right away, whereas, in an AP or an IB, you need to score high enough in order to have that actually be counted by the college. And then, depending on where you go, depends on whether that's accepted or not. We have seen an increase from 2011 to 2019. We've seen an increase of roughly 8.5% enrollment in college credit plus options, where kids are taking credit with them along the way. Now, 2011, that's a fairly new program, so that, that growth is, has started all the way across, and we're seeing kids take advantage of that option, especially being close to Ohio State. The other thing too is, that would not be represented in these measures as well, so those college credit plus options would not be represented in this ranking.
How many kids take the college plus, do you know? I know that.
I don't have the raw numbers for you, but we know that number has started to climb. We think that there will be more students who will take advantage of that long-term as well. For those of us who've had teenagers, I've been in this debate about, with my own children, about the benefits of AP versus college credit plus, so.
And then also.
They like to go into those debates.
Okay, I was just, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
As you were giving your presentation, there were a couple of points where like, the PSAT is available to all 10th and 11th graders, and then the ACT is available to all 11th graders. And kind of talking about, like, those are good points to have, like, where do I measure, and how do I get ready for the next step? If there was, if we're providing for AP, is that something that's beneficial to our kids? Is that another point to measure? Or are we already providing the opportunities, and you're, I guess, is that incentive?
I guess, let me clarify, what a question.
Like, is that, and, do we want to incentivize kids that way?
Okay.
Or, like, you're saying, we have this college plus, and there's all sorts of different ways our kids can access college-level curriculum?
So, is your question, do we want to do something similar to what Bexley's doing in order to incentivize, incentivize and create options for kids? Is that your question?
I, I, I think so.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, if that's the question, I think, at the end of the day, any way that we can increase access for our students to understand their preparedness for college, we think is a good thing, right? So, if we, you know, that's at the discretion of the board. If the board said to us, we want to move in that direction, and we want to incentivize that, that would be an option that we could consider along the way. And, you know, the reason why we think it's a good thing to offer ACT to all juniors is it creates an opportunity for kids to know what direction they're heading. PSAT as well gives us a lot of information about, not only creates opportunities for scholarships for kids long-term, but it also lets them know, as they prepare for that SAT and the ACT, are they finding themselves prepared for their next steps? So, any way we can incentivize that to support our kids, to increase access to opportunities, I think that's a great option for us along the way.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Absolutely.
So, in the class of 2019, 67% took at least one AP exam. How many of them took an AP class and did not take the exam?
So, in terms of our rate of students who took a class but did not take the exam, our rate of taking the exam is very high. It's a small number that do not take that.
So, most of our kids are taking the exam?
Most of the kids who take the class are taking the exam. It's hard to gauge, if we were doing what Bexley is doing and paying for it, what that increase would be. But, for our kids who are taking the AP class, there's a high percentage that are taking the test.
How much does it cost for a student to take an AP class?
150. How much?
I hear 95 and 150. I, I'd have to go back.
And then, does that include the cost of the exam?
No, the cost, the cost is $95 for the test, and then there's some, some additional costs associated with that.
Okay, so, about 2, 225, 2, are we looking at 250 to take an AP class plus exam?
The exam itself is $95 a year, so, when you're on a scholarship, you're not going to have to.
So, are some of our students not taking an AP class because of the cost?
I would say that in our conversation with Bexley, they feel that not paying for the class reduces their numbers, not paying for the test reduces their numbers.
So, if we said we would pay for at least one AP exam or, or class somehow through a scholarship program or through some other, I know you had mentioned some options for us to look at, that we could get more students taking an AP class or an IB class, we could...
I think it's very likely that we would see more students.
An increase.
Take AP.
Because of the cost.
Or IB. If we were offering that option to pay for the cost, yes.
Do we know what that cost would be to the school district about?
Yeah, that cost would probably be about $200,000.
So, for $200,000, we could at least guarantee one AP class to every student.
Yes.
Given their choice.
Yes.
I think that's a very small cost to pay for equity to all of our students to take an AP class. And I think that's important, because there's some students that just cannot afford to do this. Or, maybe there, there, there's other reasons. They can take the college credit plus program for less, or maybe IB's their thing. But, I think the reason why we're seeing a difference is in the ranking is because, first of all, we have a lot of choices.
We do have a lot of choices.
And, second of all, there, there are students that just don't take it because they can't.
So, the college credit plus is at no cost to them right now anyway, so.
How much is that?
Zero.
So, yeah, if I have a zero cost or a $100 cost for an exam.
Right.
I, I'm more likely to take the C, you know, the CCP. Now, the other side of that is, does US News and World Report know that we have all these choices? Are they aware that we have?
They are aware of our AP and our IB numbers, because we report those through the state. So, they know that we have AP and IB. And while this slide is only showing the AP numbers, because that's the way a lot of this data gets published, we are getting credit for our IB numbers within this as well.
But, in their report, are we getting credit?
Yes, in their report, we are getting credit, but, you know, here, it's AP to AP is the way that they'll list those things. They'll only report, they'll only show it online as one of the two measures, they won't show both. But, within their calculation, they are taking into account our IB offerings as well.
I mean, I think it's a, a good consideration for the school district to look at equity here in children's ability to take these exams, because certainly, that's hurting us in the end here. And I'm not saying every kid has to take an AP.
Right.
But, I said, if we're giving them the choice, then let's give them free choice.
Yes, and I think that's very similar to what we're seeing, you know, when, when you speak to Bexley about what they're doing, they're not requiring, but they're offering that opportunity to kids by paying for the, for the exam, so giving that option. One thing I want to make sure that I point out here as well, Nancy, is that if we were to start doing that today.
Right.
I just want you to understand that this is, this data is based on the class of 2019. So, this data is lagging behind a little bit. So, even if you started to do that today, those numbers, in terms of the US News and World Report ranking, would still lag behind, because they are based on several years behind in terms of data.
So, when we're looking at our, our rankings and our, and our proficiency in these scores, we are ahead of two years. We know what happened last year, we know what happened for the PSATs.
Yes.
We're aware of these things, and we're making adjustments every year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're using multiple data measures to pay attention to what we need to do to support our kids along the way.
Right.
This is also why you'll hear us talk about MTSS structures, as we talk about multi-tiered systems of support, that's about how we determine who needs supports and in what way, and then what are those supports going to be.
Well, seeing that education is our business, and seeing that we're giving every child every opportunity to challenge and support them, I would think that it would be, I didn't, I don't know how we would do that, Scott, is, if we would talk about this at a later time, but to allow some type of equity in taking these higher-level classes.
So, yeah, I think if that's the will of the board, so I think how procedurally we could do it is, we would take our team back, and we would do a deep dive into how this would need to work, right? And then, we would go to our teaching and learning team with, with a plan, and then we'd bring it to the full board. But, I, I'm assuming you'd want us to engage our kids in the discussion, and you'd want us to engage our staff, and you'd want us to engage our families.
Right.
And if that's the will of the board, that's something we can get to work on right away. I think our team, from a philosophical point of view, increasing access for all students to upper-level coursework is a good thing.
Right.
So, that is, that is clear. And then, then, then it's, then it's determining how to do it, right? And what is the best way for our kids? I would recommend, and I don't think anyone has said this, by the way, I would recommend, you know, chasing these rankings, I think, is, is not going to be what's best for our kids, because I know US News right now is currently looking at how they're going to adjust these moving forward, and there are many other rankings too. So, I think what this board has always done, and I appreciate it, is making those decisions based upon what's best for our kids. And, so I would think continuing to follow that philosophy is going to be the right path forward.
I, I agree with that, but I do think our community do, does look at rankings, and we do have to make sure that we are giving these opportunities, like you said.
I, I would agree with that, and I think that's a big, that's a big rationale behind the quality profile that the board has us put out on a yearly basis. And I think, you know, one of the things that we lean into heavily, have heavily are average ACT scores, average ACT scores, and the number of students going to a four, to, to, to a four-year college, and the remediation rates.
Right.
And when you look at all of those numbers now compared to a decade ago, we have seen progress across our district. And I think that is good news for our kids and good news for our families, but we're never going to stop, obviously. There is always need and room for us to do better.
So, I have a comment to kind of point out the obvious, but, all of this is, is around testing and assessment, right? If we're looking at the whole child, there are all kinds of other pieces that come into play. You know, just because they can test well on some test or exam, it doesn't mean they'll be successful in high school. So, we've got to figure out, you know, I know that our boys learned an awful lot this year online in time management, and all of a sudden, holy cow, I'm way behind, what am I going to do? I'm like, well, I don't know, what are you going to do? So, you know, we, we've got to do the whole package, and I also have the good fortune, I guess, to have one that's a really good test taker, and the other one sweats buckets, right, before each exam. So, I think we have to be really careful and sensitive, and also not create that divide for those kids that don't test well. Not saying that we can't offer opportunities, but I just think we have to be about the child, I think Paul said this, as opposed to just the data, just the numbers driven, because there's more to a kid than just test scores.
So, I'm glad you asked that question. I have another 45-minute presentation about our MTSS process that I'd like to share with you. That, when you look at our MTSS process though, I think what you'll find, Lori, is that it is not only about the academic, academic side of things, it's about the social, emotional, and the behavioral side as well. There are supports needed in all areas, and I think that's why MTSS is important as we move forward. You know, we need to be looking at all aspects if we're going to develop the whole child, and if we're, we have always believed as a district that there is more than test scores. I think that's why the quality profile matters, and I think that we prove that over and over again in all that we do as a district. So, MTSS, you will find, long-term, is really supporting more than just the academic side for students. is really supporting more than just the academic side for students. And we think that's critical. And yes, we have learned a lot in the online world this year, haven't we?
And if I could just add one thing about, Keith has mentioned MTSS a number of times. And, you know, as a reminder, that is a key aspect of the strategic plan that you all approved in the summer of 19. And it was all about, really, what Lori just talked about, is how do we look at the whole child? How do we look at the academic side of the child, which is incredibly important, and the well-being side of the child? And bring those together on an individual basis so we can challenge and support every kid. And so I think that strategic plan has never been more important than it is right now as we're coming out of the pandemic. And I think the board had a lot of forethought to put that into place even before the pandemic. But it's never been more important than it is right now to look at all those things.
Keith, I would just say, I think if you go back, I think providing extra opportunity is always important. And I think being able to guarantee one AP class for every student is a really great thing. I also, when you are showing us all this data, there are certain points where we are doing, like that remedial coursework, to me, in college is a really great point of data. And I would hate to incentivize something that could negatively impact that. So I don't know how we look at that and understand why that's better than everywhere else. Is it because we have kids who maybe in high school aren't ready for college courses and they need to build a strong foundation so then when they get to college, they're really ready? You know, or is it that we have kids who aren't in the IB program that dive deep and really, you know, teach to mastery and true understanding? So my thought is, like, yes, of course, we want the rankings to show really what we're doing. And I think we have some data points that are maybe more representative. And I think if that, like, incentivizing the AP is beneficial for our kids and continues to allow them to, like, be successful once they leave us. I mean, I think, to me, that's the measure of what our job is, is that when they go into the world, they're prepared. And maybe AP, maybe that's the right thing. I just would want to have some understanding and try not to incentivize us away from the measures where we're already being really successful.
Sure, sure.
Does that make sense?
That makes absolute sense. I think because what you see in this data is our kids are highly successful when they leave us. The work that we're doing to prepare them for the next steps, we're really preparing them for the next steps. I believe that we can, along the way, increase opportunities for kids and still have them be highly successful. I think that our teachers have proven that over and over and over again. And the MTSS structures that we're putting in place, I think we can incentivize this. You know, if we determine that we want to make sure that we're at least providing an opportunity for one AP class along the way, we'll pay close attention to the data that we're getting from that and we'll make adjustments along the way and make sure that we're supporting our kids in whatever way possible.
I'd like to add Jenny's points about the lack, the lower numbers of remediation in college. It also might be because of the quality and the depth of our teaching staff too. I think you mentioned that, and that might be a factor as well.
Absolutely.
I think that's absolutely pointing to that.
So I've got just another question. So performance index, so were there any students in 2019 that opted out on the assessment?
Oh, yeah, we've seen, we've seen increasing numbers of students opting out of that assessment. I think when you look at the performance index, I think, when I say that, you know, you see our ranking on the performance index and then you understand that we're enrolling more kids in a four-year college or university than all 20 of the top high schools in terms of performance index, it tells you there's something in question within that measure, right? So, you know, our kids are being highly successful and they're moving on to that. So, but we did have opt-outs in that year. We've had opt-outs in every year. And again, that is a choice at the family level to make that decision. We're going to respect that decision along the way. And we believe the state, it would at least be a more fair measure if it was an assessment of the tests that were taken by our students rather than anyone who does not take the test is receiving a zero.
Keith, just on a general question, and I know you don't know the answer to this, but just generally, because of the pandemic, and what do you expect these results for 2020? Because we're at 2019, right? So this is the class prior to the pandemic. And we've had some terrible struggles across the country because of COVID.
I think the state's rank...
What do you see?
Sorry, go ahead.
What do you see as far as happening in the schools?
You know, I'm going to let other people weigh in as well. So Dr. Yaki, I'm going to let you weigh in if you have anything to add to this. Number one, I think that the state measures are going to be difficult based on the changes that had to happen last year anyway, right? So you have state testing that didn't happen last spring. I think you had AP testing that had to take a very different form last spring. So I think that we can, we can work to put together a pretty clear picture of what we expect to have happen. But I think that would take some time to gather all of that data, wouldn't you say? Dr. Yaki?
I agree. Family, with this year, our performance index from 2021, if you're aware of your account, you have, and I'm even more large, we have our largest number of opt-outs that we have had. And we have a first grade that just now will be a male.
Yeah, so...
Okay, so performance index, more opted out this year?
A large number opted out this year.
A large number.
Largest we've seen in this current school year. So that'll impact our performance index from this year.
Do you see the same number of kids taking the AP test? I mean, I know that's another tough one. The AP, IB, I mean, you're looking at all those SATs, I mean... Okay. Okay, that's good to know. Okay.
Any other questions for me? Or did you want my 45-minute presentation on...
We're ready. We are ready.
Keith, we always like having you here.
Can I look for clarification here, Mr. President? So I think what I've heard is we, Keith, have been given a homework assignment to get to work on looking at a number of things and to come back to the Teaching and Learning Committee and ultimately to the Board of Education. Scott, am I correct in that?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
We'll get to work. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, so it looks like we're done with the teaching and learning update. And now it is time for public participation. So we have a number of folks who want to speak tonight. And so I'm going to first ask that we make a motion to suspend the 30-minute limit.
I'll make a motion.
All right, can you call the role for that, Mr. Christoff?
Mrs. Therese?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
And Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Mackenzie?
Aye, motion carried. So we, as I mentioned, are ready for public participation for the meeting. And each person who has registered for public participation will have up to five minutes to address the board. We will start by asking you to please state your first name only for the record. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or to question district employees. I want to remind everyone that state and federal student privacy laws prevent the district from disclosing information related to any student and you will not be permitted to discuss individual students during the public participation period. So Andy, if you'd like to start us off?
Sure, our first participant will be James.
Keith, thank you for that interesting presentation and insight. We've got the right person in that role. That's a lot of complex data and you made it simple to follow. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. Dr. Emhoff, last summer, after a brief exchange of email, you were kind enough to have Carla, your executive assistant, schedule a 30-minute phone conversation with me. Your time was so appreciated, especially when considering all the chaos you were dealing with regarding COVID-related matters. During our pleasant 30-minute call on July 13th, we specifically discussed getting the kids in school as early as possible, as frequent as possible. And one thing we learned when it comes to COVID, one thing has been proven true. One can find statistics to support his or her position on whether they have kids in school full-time, part-time, or entirely on remote learning. Simply stated, stats can be found to support or dispute whatever position one would like to take on the COVID matter. Here are some stats that cannot be disputed. According to the State Performance Index, UA schools were ranked 26th in 2015. And in 2018, UA schools were ranked 65th. That means 39 other school districts passed Upper Arlington in the state rankings in 36 short months. That decline is horrendous. And that decline occurred on your watch, Dr. Emhoff. How is that even possible in a community with the financial resources that Upper Arlington has and with the exceptional, high-quality teachers and administrators that work in this community? I could not wrap my mind around that mind-boggling decline in our state rankings. So I attempted to better educate myself as to how this occurred. And while I will never be accused of being an education industry expert, I am a person that does his best to evaluate a situation over a period of time based upon firsthand observations and real facts. And I'm a person that reaches conclusions based upon watching another person in action more than listening to another person talk. Simply stated, actions speak louder than words. And what have I have concluded that Dr. Emhoff has been focused on executing from an educational perspective over the past five years, at which time our state rankings have continued to decline? In my opinion, answers can be found when you read through the Upper Arlington School District Strategic Plan. Simply put, what are the key initiatives being set by Dr. Emhoff and filtered down to administrators and teachers to focus on when interacting with our students? According to the strategic plan in 2015, key initiatives were performance, accountability, and ownership. And what are the key initiatives transitioned to in recent years? Phrases like whole learning and culture of continuous improvement. I am not educated enough on the nuances of our curriculum, nor am I educated on gender-neutral studies. But what I can conclude is that Dr. Emhoff, while noble in some of his efforts, has entirely shifted the district's focus away from preparing students for matters that most impact state rankings. Do not misunderstand me. As Jason Fine and his awesome team always emphasize to all students at Jones Middle School, be kind. Yes, we all want kids to grow into well-rounded, kind, young adults. But we also have expectations and the resources to ascend back to the school rankings. And we should not lose focus on that key initiative until we reach the top 20 in state rankings. This is obtainable. And it's obtainable in a short period of time with the right leadership at the helm dispersing out the appropriate key initiatives in the annual strategic plan. With that initiative in mind, I ask you, Dr. Emhoff, to do what is best for the district's students and resign your post as school superintendent this evening and allow this school board in our community to begin the process of identifying a superintendent that will put a refocus on our students' education and our district's state rankings instead of a focus on resume-enhancing bullet points that might earn you accolades with today's cancel culture, sir. Thank you. Questions?
Our next individual is Tara. All right, our next individual is Kathy. Oh, she's outside? She should be able to. Why don't you come up? Go ahead, Kathy.
Hi, Kathy Pults. And today I am speaking about the school board's failure to follow Ohio's Sunshine laws. The Ohio Meeting Act states, quote, "A public body may not take any formal action, such as voting or otherwise reaching a collective decision, in an executive session." Any formal action taken in an executive session is invalid. This school board has never discussed changing building code in public. There are no minutes discussing a change in the original architectural plan or choosing to go to court to change the Ohio building code. The school board obviously made the decision to go to the Ohio Board of Building Appeals to change code. You obviously made a decision to go to Franklin County Common Pleas Court. You obviously decided to appeal to the 10th District Court of Appeals. And you obviously chose to spend almost $200,000 to change the code. Yet not once have the bathrooms been discussed at a public session. How can a decision that impacts every single student in the district for the next 50 years not have a public discussion or vote? Earlier today, you mentioned it was at community meetings. Community meetings are not a public board meeting. In the beginning, I was told that the school board voted on the architectural plans as a whole and it included only gender-neutral bathrooms. I found the documents and this was not correct. Now, we have the architect, Moody Nolan, confirming what I have been saying for months. In a letter dated March 24th, 2021, just a few weeks ago, the architect, Seid Zerainen, states, one, the plans originally approved by the city are identified for use by a specific sex. With this request, the school board is requesting the city to approve that some of these toilet rooms be relabeled as all-gender. Zerainen clearly states the original plans were labeled by specific sex. He then states the school board requests. When did you request this? In a secret meeting? Or are we supposed to assume that Zerainen is doing what he wants? This decision was not in a public session. At what point do you start following the law? First, the bathrooms are labeled against the Ohio building code. Secondly, you have made many decisions in executive session. This is against Ohio law as well. And what other decisions are you making behind closed doors? I will repeat what I have been saying for months. UA needs the most inclusive bathroom options for all children. They deserve a choice in the academic wing of girl bathrooms, boy bathrooms, or a gender-neutral bathroom. Let every child feel safe and comfortable. By speaking the truth, I have been vilified and libeled by a small group of small-minded people. Their attempt to silence and suppress our views should frighten all of you. But on the other hand, I have received encouragement and support from many families, far outnumbering the bullies. I've met many incredible people who are fighting with me for all of our children. And tonight, I found it unbelievable that some of you have just called me a bigot for wanting all kids to choose and for you to follow the law. But I have one more question. How does it feel to be the school board and superintendent overseeing the decline of our once-stellar school district? I know families who are moving out of Upper Arlington or they're pulling their kids and sending them to private schools or they're homeschooling because of the bathroom debacle as well as the district's inability to put the education of children first. Making your decisions in secret has splintered our community. Academics have taken a backseat to national agendas and social engineering. We have dropped from 26 in the state in 2014 to 65th in the Ohio Performance Index. And we would not be the only school that has kids who opt out of the test. Even as the rankings were in a freefall, the superintendent created a new strategic plan that no longer focused on academics. The superintendent's pandemic strategy has amplified his lack of leadership and creativity. Our children have suffered and there is no trust between the community and schools. There is no confidence in the superintendent and we are in desperate need of a change. It is time for a new superintendent who will put children first and reestablish Upper Arlington schools as the best in the state. Thank you.
Our next individual is Beth. Oh, are you... Yep, are you Tara? Please, Tara, go ahead.
Hi again. My name is Tara Wood. And today, I want to share a little bit about myself. I have a degree in psychology with a minor in marriage and family. I have my master's in child development from Tufts University. I've been a special education teacher for children with sensory and emotional disorders. I have been a regular third-grade classroom teacher in a high-impact school. I was the executive director of a nonprofit that did infant through pings... I was the executive director of a nonprofit that did infant through parenting education. I have worked with youth at risk, including those referred to me by court systems. And I have been hired professionally by private and public schools as a consultant for my expertise in developmentally-appropriate behavior management strategies. I'm only sharing this with you so you know that I'm not just another parent who has three students affected by your decisions in this district. I share this so you know that I actually do have some expertise behind the concerns of the developmental impact that your continued decisions or lack thereof are having on the children of Upper Arlington. I'm sure when you all decided to run for school board, you never imagined your job would throw you into a crazy situation like this past year and a half. Because of this, most of us, myself included, were willing to give you grace in the beginning. But as the months dragged on, it became more and more clear that the group of people we had chosen to act on our behalf were often incapable or unwilling to represent the community and certainly the best interests of children. You deferred your decisions to a county health department, which, the word is now out, has its school COVID guidance almost exclusively written and reviewed by local superintendents and teacher union members, including our own Paul Emhoff. How convenient that school leadership got to write the school health guidance and then say, "Hey, we're just following the rules." When it came time to form a handpicked medical advisory board, you also deferred to these individuals that we, as a community, had not elected or had any say in their selection. But not only that, it did not occur to any one of you to include a pediatric mental health expert on the board until parents started begging you to consider the mental health of our children. And now here we are again. Instead of you taking the initiative and lifting outdoor mask restrictions, it's the parents who once again have to bring it to your attention. I have been corresponding with one of you over the last couple of days, and it has been discouraging to see every single excuse for why kids must suffer three more weeks despite no medical justification or a mandate that it needs to be this way. I have even heard that members of this board have told other residents how exasperated they are that parents would still want to fight for their children when there are only three weeks left. Have you ever been away from a child you know well for three weeks and observed how much they seemed to change just in that short amount of time once you saw them again? When we're discussing child development, months, weeks, and, yes, days matter. Already, child psychologists are concerned at the social and emotional impact that children constantly wearing masks is going to have on them, an impact we may still see the effects of decades from now. So much of social and emotional development is based on facial expressions, feeling heard and hearing others, picking up on social cues, and feeling safe and accepted in a group. We have literally been taking this away from our kids for over a year, and this doesn't concern anyone? Their ridiculously low risk of getting COVID outside is more worrisome to you than the risk of the damage we're doing to them developmentally? There is absolutely no reason why they need to wear a mask outside, none. I sent you all an article today, from a liberal journalist even, published in the left-leaning New York Times. Hopefully, you had a chance to read it. It explains the numbers and how ridiculously minuscule the risk of catching COVID outdoors is. Add to this that children are lowest-risk spreaders, schools are one of the safest places to be when it comes to COVID spread, not one single case of COVID has been traced back to originating in UA schools, teachers are vaccinated, families are vaccinated, and our community COVID numbers are amazingly low. Digging our heels in and not allowing our children to play and exercise outside in the heat without a mask seems absurd. I am the parent. I have the ultimate responsibility for the health and safety of my children, not you. Let me choose whether or not my child can take their mask off outside. Let other parents choose to keep it on theirs if they don't want to believe the science. But let us make the decision. Let us, as parents, make the decision. Lift the outdoor mask restriction tonight, like many other districts across Ohio have already done. Do it for the health and the development of our children. Thank you.
So I'm representing about 40, 50 people out there in the lobby that you guys may not know are out there. So, hello, my name is Beth Ba, and I am the mother of two girls. And there's a delay, if you're wondering why the cheering is at a weird time, because there's a little time delay. So I'm the mother of two girls that live here in the district. And I'm not here tonight to try to persuade you, the members of the board, to do anything. Frankly, I think you've all been put in a very unfortunate and unfair position. I think we all can agree that this past year was far more than any of you signed up for or are capable of managing. So I'm here tonight to do the board a favor and take this heavy burden off your shoulders and place it where it belongs, on us, the parents. So please hear me, parents of Upper Arlington School District. I am here tonight to try to persuade you to do something. Because let's be honest, it's been a year, and the only thing this board has proved capable of doing is outsourcing every decision they make to unelected bureaucrats at the county, state, and federal levels. They have proven unwilling or unable to participate in the exercise of critical or independent thinking. Heaven forbid, they would even entertain the idea of allowing the parents of the community who elected you, who you represent, to make our own informed decisions for our children. We know what's best for them in the immediate, long-term, mental, physical, spiritual, emotional health of our children. Please, listen to us. History will show that this UA school board, their unelected committees, and their spineless leaders were on the wrong side of these issues consistently. They kept, you kept kids out of school too long. You implemented the most ineffective hybrid schedules in the country. And our children never should have been masked in the first place, and they certainly shouldn't still be wearing masks now. So, back to the parents, the time is now for each parent to take back the authority that is rightfully ours. You do not need to ask permission. You do not need to be a doctor or an epidemiologist or a public health specialist. You don't have to have any credentials after your names, because the only letters that come, that are important when it comes to your child is M-O-M and D-A-D. If you, as a parent, think the best thing for your child is to have their mouth and nose obstructed with a bacteria-infested rag for eight hours a day, then by all means, send your kid to school with a mask on. If you, as a parent, think the best thing for your child is not to have their mouth and nose obstructed with a bacteria-infested rag for eight hours a day, then you should stop sending your kid to school with a mask on. So, this is at great cost. I understand. My third, my daughter was a third grader at Tremont Elementary last year. But when I saw the decisions that this school board was making, I made the decision to homeschool her. So I had to quit my job, I had to put law school on hold, all because I will not, under any circumstances, allow my nine-year-old to have a mask on all day, just like I wouldn't let her be in an untested car seat, or an untested toy, or an untested anything. There is no scientific proof that the lowest risk for COVID, our children, should have a mask on. So, we decided to homeschool her, and after a disastrous first semester for my high schooler, we decided to homeschool her too. So because Upper Arlington schools profoundly failed my children, I will never send my child to a UA school again. And yes, my kids don't have to wear a mask, but it breaks my heart every day to see UA kids masked up, even on recess. I think, what if the parents were given an option? And maybe, there are many people out there who don't agree with me, and maybe my opinion is in the minority around here. But if there is even one person listening, and you need to know you are not alone, you are not crazy, you are not heartless, you are not careless, you are a parent, and you can stand up for what's right for your child, take the masks off. This school board won't do it for you. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Marissa. I'm a mother of two beautiful children, and I'm raising here in Upper Arlington, Ohio. They're the ages of five and seven. I'm here today to let you know I have many jobs to juggle. And my number-one job, the most important job, in my opinion, is to protect, cultivate, and empower my children. That said, I know you juggle many jobs as well. So, folks, Superintendent, Board of Education, you have been focusing too much on everything except your number-one job. Your job is to ensure high standards in education for our children. So, folks, I'm here to remind you of that job, to remind you that you work for me and this community. This, I'm here to remind you that your focus and your number-one should be education to the children of this community. It seems to me, based on the recent release of school rankings, that UA is not focusing on their number-one objective, which should be education. Perhaps you have been more focused on mandates, bathrooms, and everything but educating our children. But let me get to my concern today, which is my child's safety regarding masks. Masks are not neutral. They do biological, sociological, and psychological harm to children. The studies on this topic of harm done from masks over the past year are adding up so significantly that it's almost impossible for anyone to say that they can wear a mask safely. We need to stop experimenting on our children. I'm not asking you to pick what's right for everyone. Rather, I'm here to remind you to allow me to do my job as a mother in knowing what is right for my child. So, give us, moms, regardless of the choice, the right to do the number-one job. Give us the ability to decide what's best for our children. You speak of tolerance and acceptance, but if only it aligns with your views. Masks go against my religious views and everything that I believe and stand for, yet you do not give me that choice. Irrational recommendations will do no good and, in some cases, will do harm. Mask requirements are not necessary to stop the spread of the virus. Mask requirements present other health risks. Mask requirements give false sense of security. Mask requirements are difficult to enforce, especially with our young children. Mask requirements have fearful social consequences, especially among the young children. Ohio Department of Health, Ohio Department of Education, COVID-19 Health and Prevention Guidance in Ohio K-12 Schools is not law! Additionally, I need you to understand the following, and I will email you these studies to back up what I'm saying. Children are not a driver of transmissions in schools, or anywhere for that matter. Masking children in schools does not appear to impact transmission within schools. It's a low, it's low regardless of whether children are masked or not. Teachers and others who spend significant amounts of time with children appear to be reduced risk of death with COVID-19. And by the numbers, teachers are not dying at higher risk than other professions. In fact, they appear to be dying at a lot lower levels, exactly in line with the regular flu. To conclude, we have consistently deprioritized the essential needs of children. We must learn to tolerate some level of risk. It is clear that children's well-being is not your priority, and it's not in our guidelines set today. We all have jobs to do. You were elected for a term. Your term will come to an end. Mine does not. My job as a mother never ends, and I know what's best for my child. I am not here to tell you that COVID is not real. I'm here to tell you that I know what's best for my child, my child, my choice. Make mask a choice or resign today, because my term does not end, and my passion for my child will not either. So hear me today. My term does not end. So, I'll end by saying, I'm not going to tweak this, I'm going to tweak this a little bit. "Hell hath no fury like a mother scorned." And here's another one for you. No hay amor más grande que el amor de una mamá. There is no passion like that of a mother for her child. If tolerance is so important to you, let me have a choice. I will take that burden from you. It is not your right to decide what's right for everybody. Let us have our choice. My term doesn't end. Let me do my job. Give me a choice and do your job and focus on education. My child, my choice.
Our next speaker is Mickey.
Hello, my name is Mickey. I speak to you tonight as a retired school counselor, the mother of three Upper Arlington graduates, the grandmother of two current elementary students, as well as a former, longtime volunteer who worked on school climate issues for the district. Our family has always supported and trusted our schools. My husband and I even hosted one of the neighborhood meetings where school administrators explained the building campaign. I don't recall ever hearing anything at that meeting about the controversial bathrooms or the need to go to court in order to change building codes. I am in favor of utilizing some gender-neutral private bathrooms. They will be especially helpful for students who have gender identity issues and others who deal with physical handicaps. However, general-specific bathrooms, which are easily accessible during class-change times, must also be provided. That should eliminate the need and the expense for court action. It is doubtful that taxpayers want a court fight over building codes at the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars for attorney fees. All I know about alleged misdeeds committed by our school board and administration is what I have read. I do understand that you have been accused of keeping the bathroom design quiet until recently, publicly cleaning, or club, publicly claiming that legal bathrooms are available when you knew that they were too far away to be used between classes, and that the board violated Sunshine laws when authorizing legal action to change building codes. I would welcome your response to these allegations. If there is no response, citizens will assume that you did not act in good faith. I would also like to see our schools being compliant with existing building codes and providing both kinds of bathrooms.
Our next speaker is Nettie. Our next one is Matthew M.
Thank you for the opportunity to come back again. You all remember me from last month. Showed up, didn't know the rules, and then complied, apparently. So now I'm complying with the rules. I signed up in advance, and here I am. And you, of course, suggested that I have a separate meeting with Dr. Emhoff. Did that, and in a confirmation email, he again reiterated the rules and how this works when we have to address the board, right? So we're all in agreement that it's important to follow rules. So, rules are important, they, you know, protect us all, they create, you know, a situation where we don't have things running amok and anarchy and all these type of things. And they're usually put in place to benefit the masses, the greater portion of the population. With that in mind, it seems to me that the state, of course, that Kathy pointed out and these other folks pointed out, the state has their own rules, and it's called building code. And the building code very simply states that there should be separate bathrooms, clearly marked for men and women. All we're asking here is that you follow the rules, just like you're so inclined to do here and so inclined to insist that I follow the rules. I'm going to insist that you folks follow the rules. Follow the rules and put separate bathrooms in. I, I, I'm concerned for the safety of my daughter and my son as well. And that's very simply it. It just, it all comes down to safety.
Our next individual is Bishop.
Board President McKenzie, Vice President Moore, members of the board, and Superintendent Emhoff. I'd like to thank you I'd like to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak today, and also thank you for the decision to move the meeting to this location. As a parent of two children at Hastings, I appreciate your commitment to allowing free speech while still protecting vulnerable students. I'm sure you're aware of recent anti-mask protests that took place outside of middle school in Santa Monica, which eventually devolved into participants hurling invectives at students and parents. I am happy that the board decided to put the physical and emotional safety and security of Hastings students first while still allowing protesters the right to have their voices heard. The students at Hastings did not have a choice to be present, and the protesters' unnecessary agenda should not be pushed onto our kids. They should not have to endure the angst of walking through a protest that may make them feel targeted. Thank you for showing the community that our kids matter. I know the past year has been very difficult for you, and I appreciate each of you and the diligent work you've put into dealing with many incredibly fraught subjects all during a global pandemic. I'm hoping to motivate you to keep fighting the good fight. It's unfortunate that so many members of our community use litigation as a weapon, and I fear this will only continue as time goes on. The tension escalates. I applaud your commitment to the single-stall restrooms in our schools. While some might think your decisions transcend the will of residents and students, I think it's been clear from communications to the board as well as public participation at recent board meetings that the majority of UA residents are in support of the new school bathrooms for a variety of reasons. Unfortunately, expect to gear up for larger battles. Anti-transgender legislation mirroring a bill passed last month in Tennessee is currently being lobbied for at the Ohio General Assembly by members of our Upper Arlington community. This bill is widely described in the media as allowing parents to sue school districts for monetary damages for, quote, "all psychological, emotional, and physical harms suffered," unquote, if transgender children are allowed to use facilities other than the gender assigned to that child at birth. And while opponents of your decision, they insist that this is simply about signage and code and protecting their daughters, the truth is, they also appeared on a local radio show, and the host and guest used the words transgender and transgender bathrooms 10 times in a mere 17 minutes. The host's intro to the segment described trans children as "suffering from gender confusion" and "tragic." A caller's description was simply that it is, quote, "perverted thinking." Members of the board, when someone shows you who they are, believe them. LGBTQ children, as well as those who prefer single-stall bathrooms for health, bullying, or simply privacy reasons, should not be the target of a social experiment based on ignorance and fear. Thank you for your commitment to support the health and well-being of all students, even though many are fiercely fighting your stance. On a related note, I'd also like to thank you for your recent hiring of our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I'm sure you have already heard some voices complaining about supposed critical race theory in the Upper Arlington schools curriculum. And if you haven't, you likely will soon. Politicians and candidates are crisscrossing the state, and one recently landed in Upper Arlington for a meeting where the agenda was described as, quote, "What is happening in our schools with the push towards critical race theory is appalling," unquote. Critical race theory, or CRT as they call it, seems to be the new mythical buzzword that will be used as a rallying cry for those who are against diversity, equity, and inclusion. I applaud your commitment to an accurate curriculum that includes educating our students in an age-appropriate fashion about racism, privilege, and whitewashing of history, both in this community's past and the nation and world as a whole, as well as developing the critical thinking skills that are so necessary in a life after high school. These are reasonable values that we should all uphold. Again, I cannot state enough how incredibly grateful I am for all of you and your commitment to our children's educational, social, and emotional well-being. You are not bullying or engaging in cancel culture. Each one of you is here to put our children first. While I may not agree with every decision you make, I appreciate your commitment to speaking your truth, because the truth matters, and the truth is always a defense. Thank you for your time.
Our next individual is Matt B.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening and having this dialogue. I will admit that it has been a while since I've been to one of the Board of Education meetings, and I regret that. I would like to come back and be frankly encouraged, as I have been tonight, by much of what has gone on. The presentation of the school district's data was impressive, and I want to applaud you in your response to it on the AP test issue. Your willingness and nimbleness, frankly, in responding to what looked like an issue that needed to be addressed and could be quickly was impressive to me, and I appreciate that. I also appreciated the desire that you stated to engage the community on how that decision should be made. Dr. Imhoff's stated intention to involve the students and parents particularly in a light item that could be in the neighborhood of $200,000 for the district. And so again, I applaud all of that, and I was encouraged by that. I will tell you that I would have liked to have seen that same level of commitment to community dialogue engaged in the bathroom issue. To me, we're talking about apparently a similar price tag for just the litigation related to the bathrooms. And so that price tag that has gone to lawyers could have well paid for the AP test issue that we're now talking about engaging the community on. But again, it is, it is good that we are having this dialogue, and I do believe firmly that we can come, that people of good faith can come to and have differing conclusions on points of view, even this one. I disagree with the direction that the board has gone, but that does not mean that I doubt your good faith. That does not mean that I doubt your sincerity. That does not mean that I doubt the desire of yours to achieve what you believe to be best for the kids in our school district. I simply disagree with where you landed. And it's unfortunate to me that not all of the board shares that perspective about people that disagree. In fact, you know, I think that, I have heard from Dr. Imhoff that what we are talking about here is just a matter of signage. I've also heard that there are an acknowledgement from him that the community was not engaged in a broad way beyond specific design team meetings. I think that is unfortunate. The good news, though, is that there is the opportunity to rectify that, and I would encourage the board, and you obviously know by my stating that I disagree where I stand on it, but my encouragement to you is to, let's correct that error. Let's go back and let's invest the time and find out where the community stands on these things. Because it is not the fact that there are private bathrooms, that is not the issue. The fact is, as Dr. Imhoff relayed to me, that part of the reason for doing gender-neutral bathrooms was to break down gender barriers. Whether that is a worthy goal, whether that is something that is needed, and whether or not it's appropriate for the school district to use its facilities to accomplish that specific goal are all issues about which we can have good faith disagreements. And we do. And I would encourage you to, again, take the opportunity to correct the problem by omitting feedback from the larger community on that desire to go back and seek out what the community does in fact, what they would like to see happen with regard to the bathrooms. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Desiree, and I come before you as a parent of Upper Arlington students and as an Upper Arlington community member. I come to you today on behalf of reasonable people and on behalf of the children that so often don't see their voices advocated for within the district. What I speak of today is not some radical leftist concept, it's what happens in nearly every home in this community. A private bathroom shared by people of different genders, all existing under one roof. The folks who filed suit to stop the bathroom signage change costing the district money, who we've seen on Facebook complaining about the code, the ones who forced this meeting to be moved off of school property so that kids needn't be exposed to their fear-mongering language, and that we saw out there tonight represent a small minority of adults who do not have all of our children's best interests at heart. The reality of this not-all-out-there concept is that we know that it will absolutely make our kids' lives better. It will offer them protected privacy in a space where they have none. It will give kids one less reason to feel different or excluded. It will provide a private space for children with medical conditions. It will affirm to all of the trans and gender nonconforming students that they matter, that their lives matter. It's ironic for me to hear people saying that they care about the mental health and welfare of our children, but do they know that a trans child is 50% less likely to commit suicide before the age of 16 if they are in an inclusive and affirming environment? We also all know that violence and bullying between kids happens in the existing traditional bathrooms where they are completely unsupervised. We know this, so much so, that it is a trope played out in almost every coming-of-age film made in the last 50 years. In this same vein, we need to do all we can to keep our children safe as they finish out the school year. Every day we see images and stories from India that feel reminiscent of those coming from Italy in February 2020. We need to continue to protect our children and our teachers and staff, and they need to continue to wear masks through the end of the school year. Masks have gotten us this far, and we are so close to the end, it would be foolish to give up the things that have been keeping us healthy thus far. All of this to say, members of the board, I ask you to please listen to the parents, the students, and the science on both the single-stall toilet rooms and masks being worn in the classroom.
Our next individual is Lisa.
I want to thank the board and thank Mr. Imhoff for giving us this opportunity. And I didn't prepare anything, but I wanted to say that I, one of the things is I love UA is the school, there's many people in this room I have thanked, I've sent emails to because of their flexibility and what they have done for my student in particular. I think the nice thing when I hear about from UA is that they talk about the whole child, that they think about each individual, that there are things about, you know, individual plans. But I think that when we talk about the whole child when it comes to the restroom issue, we have to think about all children, right? I believe that we should have neutral gender restrooms. I also believe that we should have single-sex restrooms as well, because of those very same reasons. Because I think there's people with medical conditions, and I think that we need to be realistic and use common sense. I think women can tell you from being in restrooms that they at times can be disgusting. And boys can tell you from being in restrooms that they at times can be disgusting. The bottom line is I've actually worked in some of the schools, and my son, who's older and going to a high school, he probably is better able to handle himself in this situation. But for younger kids, I have been in restrooms with boys and girls in restrooms together because they're naturally curious. They don't know that they should not be in that restroom. I also know, as good as our community is and as well-staffed as we are, we could always use an extra teacher in a classroom. I think we could agree with that. Because inevitably, everyone can say, things have happened in restrooms all through UA. And it's just, it's unavoidable, right? We don't have a monitor to be at every restroom. And that is whether it's in kindergarten or whether it's in 12th grade. So I think it's important that we can consider, that I would encourage UA to open up the discussion. I don't think accusing someone of being against a party is the right thing. I think the bottom matter is, you know, I think what's important is to have equal access for all of the people, whether it's boys, girls, and neutral gender, right? But they should all be located in the same area. You know, I would hate to have, I don't know, I have to be honest, I don't know the plans. I've heard things that they're located in a different area and making it more difficult to get to, but I would hope that would not be the case, right? Because we're thinking about all children and the holistic of all children. I also want the board to consider that we should maybe take a vote and get the whole community. Since we're looking at the whole child, let's look at the whole community and get the whole community to vote on this. And I think that's important, because it wasn't too long ago that, nothing to do with this board, there was a distrust between the community and the city. And I think it's really important to have trust, right, between the school board and its community, a superintendent and the community in which she represents, right? I know you guys have the best interest. It was amazing what you guys did this year to accommodate every family. My child was online. And you know what? I did that because I felt it was the best thing for him. But the fact that I could have brought my child in at every opportunity, and for any child that was in school, you gave them any, every opportunity to go online. You did everything amazing. You had so much flexibility during a time of chaos. And I ask you to use that same flexibility and talk to your community, get input. If we're gonna vote on a community center, let's vote on these restrooms. And all I'm saying is the vote about having them all in the same area. There is no reason, a community like ours, with the money that we have, the fact that we're in the process of building and not renovating these buildings, that we couldn't have all three restrooms available in the same area. And I ask you to go to your community, because I think it's important to preserve the relationship with your community. I think when we look at, looking at levies that we want to pass, we want the community to feel that you guys are working with them. So I think it's important to have that conversation and let them take a vote, and to listen versus to put things through without their vote, because it is their children, and we have to use common sense. The people that are here and speaking and myself, they have compassion as all of you do. All of you have children in this room, and you equally love your children. So the people coming here are not bad people, even though we don't all agree, but the fact of the matter is we all love our children, and that we can agree. So give them the opportunity to cast their vote for their child, because they know their child the best. I thank you for your time, and thank you for everything that you've done this year.
And our last, our last individual tonight is Carrie.
All right, well, some of my talk has already been covered. I saw a great spin on numbers tonight, and I wanted to say that I do feel like the district is still manipulating the data to hide our deficiencies. We do have deficiencies in UA. There are kids in other districts that opt out of tests, so we can't say that that's the reason that our, you know, our scores are low. Based on performance, Ohio high schools are ranked on state-required testing, graduation, and how they prepare students for college. This is a dramatic decline from previous rankings, unfortunately part of a concerning downward trend. It is a downward trend. UA is behind Bexley, Grandview, Dublin, New Albany, and Olentangie City Schools in Columbus alone. And to be clear, these rankings are based on college readiness, performance, and state-required testing. What is more confusing to me is that according to recent published reports, Upper Arlington has the second-highest expenditure per pupil in Columbus, second only to Grandview. Even with this financial advantage, Upper Arlington is only ranked 11th in the Columbus metropolitan area. I'm not sure where the money's going. I think that you guys need to be a little bit more clear on that we're spending, you know, $16,000 per pupil, and we're still failing when it comes to our kids. Making matters worse, is the complete lack of communication with the, with the community. However, tonight, I have to re, have to say that there was communication about this tonight, and I'm glad to see that this information was brought to the board meeting. In 2019, we were ranked number 14th in the state, and this has been a 22-point decrease. The other top schools in our state, most of them are in the state, and I'm glad to The other top schools in our state mostly retained their position during the same pandemic that we all faced. So we're all in this together. All these schools are experiencing the same things that we are. Something has happened to create this fall. The Ohio Department of Education ranks all of the school districts in Ohio using their state performance index. Upper Arlington dropped from 26th in 2015 to 65th in 2018. My question is, how are we going to fix this? Has the Upper Arlington School Board Superintendent and Associate Superintendents lost focus? Have you been so distracted with other issues that you have lost sight on the core principles of education? Upper Arlington School has been an elite school in Columbus and the entire state of Ohio for generations until now. Many past Upper Arlington School Boards and Superintendents have addressed complex and changing social environments and remained at the top of their class. Our community now finds itself with historically low performance rankings, and people do depend on rankings. You can spin it any way you want, they are important. To the Upper Arlington community and fellow parents of students in our schools, it is time to ask the tough questions about our unprecedented, unprecedented low rankings and continued downward spiral. Does Upper Arlington have the correct leadership in place to right this ship? We should have a school board and superintendent that are transparent about why our rankings are continuing to drop. UA cannot have great schools just because we say so. A decline doesn't happen overnight, it has been happening since 2015. It has taken Upper Arlington generations to reach academic excellence and eight years to erode those gains. I'm asking the Upper Arlington School Board the following questions. Some of them have been addressed tonight, but I do think that more depth needs to be, they need to go in more into depth on these things. Why is our high school ranking dropping to historical lows during our leadership, during your leadership? Why is our high school quickly receding in rank when preparing our children for college? Why are so many students failing? How are we addressing this problem? Do you even prioritize college readiness anymore? It seems like, seems like we might be sliding in that department. Is this school board and superintendent committed to educational excellence, or have you prioritized other issues instead? I would like these answers to be transparent and as clear as possible. In the past, the school board has answered speakers' questions privately and only to the person that's asking the question. I respectfully ask the board and the superintendent to respond to these questions to all of Upper Arlington and the community by posting answers and explanations on your website. This information needs to be easily accessible to everyone. My impression is that UA schools lack the leadership that we need. We need people to guide this community and to take initiative. Our current leadership has failed us, our rankings reflect that. Either take charge or step aside before the school continues this historical slide to mediocrity. Reputation's taken abundance of time to build and minutes to destroy. Stop making decisions about our children that are destroying their core and fundamental education. Since I have a couple of seconds left, I would also like to address the bathroom issue.
Hey, your, your extra five minutes is up.
I'm, I'm up?
Yep.
Darn it.
Sorry.
Next time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This concludes the public participation.
All right, we thank everyone for sharing tonight. So Mr. Geistfeld, I think you're up.
Great.
Ready for your treasurer's update?
All right, let's go ahead and, we got a couple of items tonight to discuss. First is where we are for the month end of April. As you know, that is 10 months into the fiscal year. And then we want to go ahead and discuss the five-year forecast and where, where that is as we modify the forecast for this time. So as of, as of the month of, end of April, you can see that we are $1.9 million better than where we forecasted. We are $2.6 million better than where we forecasted in expenditures. So a total of $4.5 million if we continue to track the way we're tracking. And once again, let me re-say it again, if we continue to track, right? Because we know a lot of that savings started early in the year when we were not in, every day, every student. Now, as those expenditures come in and as supplies have been purchased, et cetera, the last couple of months, we are, we expect to exceed where we had budgeted. So therefore, we will end up spending a portion of those funds that you see as savings right now. But should this continue, it will be $4.5 million better than forecasted. Go to the next slide, thank you. The revenue is $1.9 million better, and why, why is that? And you'll see, $1.5 million of that relates to local taxes. And as you know, we went through a reappraisal this year. As you know, we were coming, we were in a pandemic, so we were trying to estimate where delinquency would be. And I can tell you right now, the $1.5 million is due to new construction being a little higher than projected, the overall reappraisal being a little bit higher than projected, but mostly because of delinquency. Delinquency, it appears to be not catching up to us this, this year, but the expectation is it'll be that the following year. So, so we estimated it with delinquency to be about 2% this year. It ends up being kind of where we were in past years, but we do expect that delinquency to then catch up to us here in 2022, 2023, as we continue to evaluate that. State revenue is three, about $300,000 better than forecasted. Why is that? As we talked about the last several months, is originally the state was going, going to reduce our funding. But after the, where the, where the economy has not impacted the state as greatly as they thought, they had, they reduced our, they reduced our reductions or decreased our reductions, and therefore, we're bringing in more than we expected by about $300,000. You will see, these are two adjustments we want to make in the five-year forecast, so kind of keep this in the back of your mind as we, as we talk about adjustments here in a little bit for the five-year forecast. The expenditure side, you'll see again, when it comes to where we are, are tracking better than expenditures, you can see the largest portion has purchased services. Purchased services really ties again into the pandemic, pandemic and how it impacted us. Our sub-costs are down, not just because we didn't have teachers out, but because there are very fewer subs here, as we've talked about over the last seven or eight months, fewer subs that were willing to come in the districts and do that work. So therefore, our expenditures were down versus projected. You also see we're about $400,000 better in basically costs related to the ESC. Part of that is timing because we have not received our March bill yet. So therefore, March and April will be paid here in May, so you will see us catch up on that. The other portion of that is utility costs. And as we talked about in the past, the utility costs were projected to be higher because we were running two or three schools on, on a site. But as of right now, that billing is still being delayed, so therefore, we do not have those types of expenditures. Other, other expenditures, we're tracking $550,000 better. As we talked about, that is good news because we originally thought we would have to go ahead and transfer more funds from the general fund to food service. However, food service has done a good job tracking expenditures, they bring in revenue when they can when it comes to applying for state funds, et cetera. And that's allowed us to go ahead and track better than the, than the $600,000 we were anticipating to have already transferred by this time. You will see, that's one of the other suggestions or recommendations we're making here with the five-year forecast, is to reduce our transfers in by, our transfers out by $200,000 because of the success of our food service program. Questions on that, on just where we are for 10 months into the year, tracking-wise? Not really much has changed since our conversation even, even six months ago on kind of how we're tracking. But I will tell you, like I said, we do expect to have more expenditures in the next couple of months than we, than we originally budgeted, just more of a timing delay on how those things are happening.
It, it's really cool how, what we did for the right reasons to make sure all kids could eat whether we were open or closed, and, but we expected it to cost a lot more. Are there any other expenses that, that you can foresee that, with federal dollars coming in, that we, things that we are doing and already doing because it's the right thing to do, that we, and that we've planned for? We may see some savings due to federal dollars coming in for what we're already doing?
Not so much federal dollars on that way, Carol. What you'll see, though, is all throughout this whole year, the federal, the federal government and then through the state has basically had all, had all lunches be free, right? So therefore, we've been reimbursed, but not potentially, but by being reimbursed, we also haven't offered as many things as we'd, as we would have offered in the past, which has then decreased some of our revenue. But it's allowed us also for a little more consistency on the revenue side because of those that have chosen the free lunches, et cetera, we get reimbursed by a certain amount per meal, and that's allowed us then to go ahead and track. That program is going to continue again next year, and our, our food service director, Irene Hunt, has done a great job of really helping us, basically educating us in that process and also preparing us for that over this next, next year as it'll continue. And how can we continue to serve our kids and give our kids the meals that are healthy and nutritional and will, will help them, help any student, to be honest with you, and continue to feed or fill their bellies? But it's also allowed us to go ahead and start planning because obviously, we are planning for the, for the new high school. We're planning for the, you know, the use of the new kitchens where we haven't necessarily been able to use in the elementaries as, as well as we would like. This is the excitement about next year, and this will continue to be discussions over the next couple of years. And I can tell you, we are so fortunate to have the food service director we have. Irene came and talked to us on the finance committee this, this past month, and it was very impressive to see her planning and her staging and really seeing where, where we go from here. And Scott, I don't know if you want to say anything, but it was, I thought it was pretty impressive, her presentation.
Yeah, I just was impressed with the, the ability that she had to try to look to the future and, and do the planning that she did, and I think that's just served us well, you know, has served us well this year, and she hasn't stopped, and she's continued to keep working as, as hard as she can to pare down the, the expenditures and give the services to the kids, increase the service to the kids. So I was, I was pretty impressed.
One of the other things to mention, and I know Mr. Potts has talked about this in the past too, and Dr. Jenny also, is we've had challenges at times staffing our areas, right? And to still run our food service department even though we're down several, several positions, once again, shows the commitment by that food service, by the nutrition service department, right? And just really meeting kids where they're at and serving them and meeting their needs. And I think this just supports, and to do it in an efficient and economical way is even better. And I think that goes a long ways in that conversation. Next, next slide. This is where we are for the construction funds. As of the end of the month, we had spent 170, almost 180 million dollars in expenditures. We have contracts of about $50 million, and then that remaining amount of about $3 million, that is still available for change orders. I will tell you that, as you expect and as we know, every month we bring change orders to you. Chris will be going over those again here, right after I get done with this presentation. But to realize, we still feel good where we are when it comes to the change orders. That $3 million is probably down to $2 million now just based on the change orders that you've approved or that are coming to you. But overall, talking to our owners, our owners rep, they feel good where we are, and we will continue to track that and share that with you as we hopefully finish this project without any other issues. Questions on the construction funds? But once again, we feel good where we're at, it's where we're expected to be at, and as we open these buildings, I think there'll be some excitement and coming in right now in budget, on budget.
I didn't understand, you went kind of fast by this, but did, did you say something about we came on earlier or later or, or something with expecting to heat two buildings and then only having one? What was that you said?
Yeah, what you'll see is, we, I was expecting utility costs to be higher than it, than it's tracked so far this year.
Uh huh.
And part of that was because we knew that we would have, you think about the high school, right? And we have the old high school that we're heating because kids are in there, et cetera, and cooling because kids are in there. As the building gets to a certain spot, then you've got to turn on the heat in the new building. You've got to go ahead and, and cool the new building, et cetera. So we were expecting to have more, multiple expenses by location. A great example too is Wickliffe, right? You have old Wickliffe, a new Wickliffe. Even though Windermere doesn't exist anymore, we were still expecting some fluctuations there, and that has not come to fruition yet. I will tell you that this last month, it was, this last month, we saw some, some bills that were tracking higher than what we've seen, I guess what we would have seen last year. So we're starting to see that now, but not nearly as many months as we thought we would see during that time.
Thank you. Yeah.
So how long will we go actually looking at change orders? So, you know, we're going to get into the high school here in a couple of months and tear the old one down. I'm sure, you know, we'll have to keep change orders alive, but I'm just wondering, you know, we're at maybe 2 million now. So when can we start to think about celebrating a little bit?
I'll tell you what, ask me, ask me another 12 months, once we get through a kind of...
So it's that long?
I will tell you, right now, you'll see even with what Mr. Potts shares with you is, even though we've had no additional change orders in Greensview and Tremont for several months, you know, we still have not closed those projects yet, right? So it took, it took several months to get caught up on the change orders. So, so not only will we still be doing some work at the high school with the teardown of the old high school and then the fields and, and those types of, or that type of work, I have no doubt there'll still be some catching up still of change orders that were, that were done, that need to be going approved, et cetera. So I, I don't feel comfortable, at least for another 12 months, to be talking about, you know, what we have left, and then we'll start having some more conversations. But the good news is, I shouldn't jinx myself here, but the fact that we are undercover, undercover, we've got all our buildings up, right? We've gone through a large portion of where there's risk. Really, the last large part of risk is really to see what kind of soil we have under the high school and under, under like the, the playing fields, et cetera, to see if we're going to have any kind of challenges there when it comes to suitable soil. Anything else?
Andy, you, you gave us this cash summary report here. Is that related to the, the balance left over? I was just looking at the unencumbered balance that you, I mean...
No, those are, those are all our funds, Nancy, and those are, that's like basically our, basically our checking account for all of our various funds.
Okay, yeah, I don't think I've seen this before.
Well, it's, why don't you say that?
I can't remember this.
We've spent the, it's been in your packet, but in a different format.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Now, because of the transition, we have to do the software.
My fault.
Well, it's a great point because I, I wanted to mention this anyway.
Well, I never had it just right here like this.
As you, as you've heard me share over the last month or so, we've had some challenges of, we were required to change softwares, right? So we changed softwares over about three weeks ago, and we still have some challenges. What you'll see is that report right there, Nancy, is an example of one of the reports that comes out.
Okay, I apologize. It just looked like a different format to me.
Yeah, I don't like the format of it. You'll see that actually to the very last page, it's, it's actually the, the scents are actually on another line for some of those because we don't have control of the formatting right now. So this software is, is, you know, the districts across the state of Ohio, the majority of them are transferring, are transitioning to this software, and I am hoping over time as, as once everyone gets on this software, we get some ability to actually change looking, to change the look of some of those reports because what you just mentioned, you have not seen reports like that because they're definitely a different format, and I'm not, not as keen on the way those look right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's my, my mistake.
Nope.
No, thanks, I, I just not accustomed to it.
But actually, you walked into my conversation, so thank you. So last thing I want to talk about then is the five-year forecast. As you know, we are required twice a year to submit a five-year forecast to the state. The main five-year forecast is done in October, November timeframe, and that really projects five years out, right? Then we update it in May for any material or any differences really that, that we want to, that we feel we need to update for the future. So every district has to submit something, whether it's the exact same forecast or whether it's a, I guess some revisions to the previous forecast. So it's not nearly as, as, as a, as much of a big, larger discussion, I guess, because now we're just basically updating versus creating a whole new forecast basically that we did in October, November. So what you'll see here is this is, this is where we are as of the, as of the most recent revision here, and I'll go to revision in a minute, but just so you can see, things have not changed, right? We are still spending more than we are bringing in, which we expected because once again, don't forget, as a, when it comes to a levy, the first year or two, you bring in more money than you spend, and then that quickly changes itself to either a three, four, or five-year cycle. You will see here, this is, and this graph here is truly cash basis, okay? It does not back out yet the reserves of, for our fund balance, or our fund reserve that we like to have, the budget reserve we talked about for the last several months, right? And also doesn't back out encumbrances. Encumbrances are those purchase orders that are out there but have not been paid against yet, so it's almost a reserve there too. So what you'll see here is, if you actually take the reserves, so that basically that 13% we're reserving for future years along with the encumbrances, fiscal year '25 then is, is where we saw it in the past basically with a deficit of balance. Now it's point, now it's $8.3 million deficit balance versus before it was more like the 11, 12 million dollar deficit balance. But the importance here is to realize, even though we've had some positive news and we've been to update our forecast, we still are where we expected to be, and those years out are, don't forget, are going to be a challenge because we've now delayed the levy two years, right? Originally, we were going to go in November of '20, then we pushed it back to November '21, and now... Then we pushed it back to November '21, and now we push it back to November '22. So just to kind of keep that in the back of your mind, the farther we get down there, we'll have some more and more challenges to discuss. Next slide. What this shows you then is this shows you by year the increase in revenue. So you will see, and it's an accumulative balance, so by the time we're done with these changes in revenue that you're going to see, the favorable balance is about $5 million. And then the question is, what makes that up? So we go to the next slide. What you'll see here then is the revenue accounts for everything but $200,000. That $200,000 we adjusted expenses by, that was what we just talked about with the transfers, right? So we reduced our transfers to the food service department, food service area. So therefore, that saves us $200,000 in expense for this year. You'll see it's not in future years because we weren't planning on doing transfers in the future years anyways. But by decreasing this transfer for this year allowed us for a one-year impact. So the majority of the increases, the changes in the five-year forecast relates to revenue. And we purposely did not make the changes in expenditures this year. First of all, we know it's a one-time change based on expenses, but also because we expect our expenses to grow more here in May and June as we get prepared for the following year, et cetera. Okay? So when you come to the next slide then, this really shows you by category the changes. And you can see the majority of the increase is line 1.010, which is our general property tax. So that's what we were talking about, how delinquency is down, so therefore your revenue is a little higher up. You can see that if the valuation's higher for new construction, that brings in additional revenue. And then when you talk about the reappraisal being a little bit higher, that brings in more additional revenue. So you can see the $1.1 million for this year, higher than anticipated. Next year comes to $600,000. But the reason those years are out fiscal year-wise is because we bumped the delinquency back the second and third year. So that's why you see less being collected than we originally anticipated. The tangible personal property tax, what that is, is that's basically taxed on utilities. So all the various lines underground, the various utility buildings throughout the district, what we've seen is these companies have started putting more and more money into upgrading the lines, upgrading some of their, what do I want to say? I guess their equipment, their, some of their cycles they got going on. Whereas we anticipated a decrease, but because of where they are, they're actually upgrading their, with their equipment, their equipment and property, which then increases their valuation for us. So what you'll see is we brought up $110,000 in more for this fiscal year, about $200,000 more on a calendar year each year going forward. And then we anticipate, just the way things are trending now, about a 1% growth each year that we had not plugged into the forecast, along with a 4% increase then when it comes to the next revaluation. This is good news for us, and it's actually good news as a resident because that means they keep upgrading the lines, they keep upgrading the capacity. And also it's good for the schools because it brings in some additional funds for us.
So that's additional funds that aren't having to come out of inside millage or outside millage or to be appreciated?
Right. Actually, not to get kind of in the weeds, but when it comes to tangible personal property tax, that doesn't, whatever the tax rate is, that's what it's paid on, right? So there's not, so if it increases, it doesn't roll back. It just, it's set aside on what it is at the time.
Good to know.
Property tax allocation, that is the amount that the state pays for residents for taxes. And as you'd anticipate, as tax, as our revenue goes up for the regular tax, property taxes, the state pays a little bit more. So that's why you see taxes are up and then you'll see personal property, or property tax allocations up in the outer years. Line 1.035, that's the unrestricted grants and aid. That's what we were talking about earlier about how the state reduced their, I guess, reductions or decreased their reductions for us. And you can see how that plays out. It's about $300,000 as it plays out over the next, each year over the next five years. Then you see all of the revenue, $60,000 the first year and then 120 those years after. What that relates to is that relates to the development on Lane Avenue, which is the second hotel and a bunch of those condos and houses over there and then eventually some apartments and then eventually some more stores on the first floor. We're expecting that TIP to come in and start becoming tax incremental financing. That revenue that comes from the city to us is considered other revenue, other revenue, not tax revenue. So as that gets inputted, you'll see a little decrease in the tax revenue, but then it gets put into other revenue instead. That was not included in the five-year forecast in October, November, so we added that to this forecast. Questions on that?
Just kind of making sure that I'm looking at all these numbers right. These are either in addition to what we've already forecasted or like subtracting.
That's a great point. I didn't share that. You're exactly right. This is the impact, this is comparing...
It says it on there. I just want to make sure that that's...
No, you're absolutely right. This is impacting, so these are just the changes. This is not how much revenue we're bringing in, right? Because we're bringing in, you know, 90-plus million dollars here. These are just the fluctuations from the last one. No, that's a good point. Questions on that? If we can go to the last slide. What's important here is this is the breakdown, what you just saw, but it does it accumulatively. So $3.1 million of it was property tax changes. State funding after five years accumulates to over a million dollars. Property tax allocation, when you add up all the five lines, you saw 73,000. And then finally, the other revenue, which is that TIP funds, about $420,000 over five years. On the expense side, you can see the only thing, the only modification we made at this time is just for that transfer in, or I guess reduction of transfers in. So overall, when you look at the balance, as we mentioned, I think it's important to look at it as a total expenses because, you know, for a home budget, if you would tell me that I am, what, $5 million better than I projected over five years, I'd be jumping up and down, right? You need to remember that when it comes to our expenses in that fifth year out, this is about, only about a 4% impact on us, right? So yes, we're thankful and yes, we're grateful and yes, we are glad anytime it's a positive variance, but realize, $4 million over a $110 million budget five years out is not a material fluctuation. And I think that's important. So this $4 million, or this $5 million will not change how we, I mean, how we operate, how we, timing of a levy or something like that. It just allows us a little more flexibility when those discussions happen, but we're still going to be on those same timelines we talked about. Makes sense? Because I don't want to get too giddy about $5 million because yes, that is a lot of money for us individually, but as a $110 million company, not as material as you would think. Questions? All right.
Thanks, Andy. Now it's time for a construction update.
My eyes weren't seeing that very well, but it's right here. Okay, we'll go through the construction update here tonight. First, we want to start with change orders as we always do. As Andy mentioned, you know, most of our change orders at our elementary schools, with the exception of the two schools that we are still working on, we've seen a drastic decline to no change orders. And so as you look at the chart here, at Barrington, we had 11 change orders that equaled $42,000, all under $25,000. So all, you know, minor things and things that, you know, the reason we have contingency and change order accounts. And so at Greensview, no new change orders. At Tremont and at Wickliff, just four change orders to date here this last month that were less than $25,000, totaling $12,000. So at Wickliff, those are some things that we've continued to push back on. You know, Wickliff has been open, but these are things we've continued to push back on with the help of Turner and Gilbane to go back to their subs and, you know, change what we believe the price should be. And so these are just catch-up really at Wickliff. As we move on to... Yeah, so, you know, look at, I'll use Greensview as an example. I don't think we've had change orders there in the last four months perhaps. And I know what we've been getting all the closeout documents from them, which is all the materials that provide...
Sorry, that was me.
Provide us the, wait, Jenny jumped. Provide us the warranties and all the materials of, you know, you know, if the, really the asbills, how it was built. And so all the materials have been being gathered. You know, Alfred has not come to us recent, in the last X months with anything for Greensview. So it's just closing things out and getting the final payments made at a lot of those schools. And it's been about 12 months. So as Andy said, you know, I think 12 months is a good gauge. And the reason it's a good gauge is because after 11 months, after you open a project and they turn it over to you, for 11 months, we're able to keep going back to the contractor to say, hey, something doesn't seem right, something doesn't feel right. And then we do an 11-month walkthrough with our architect and with the contractor where we review all the items that we think may need to be tweaked or fixed. But after that 12 months is when it becomes our responsibility. And so I think 12 months is a good, is a good gauge as it relates to trying to close out a project.
I remember getting OSIP money, and that was a nice financial boon that I didn't expect. And so are we going to see, oh, here's Andy.
Yeah, let me jump into that. You know, one of the decisions we made, gosh, three, four years ago now, right, was to do a owner-controlled insurance program. And part of that was the construction, or I guess the CMRs basically included what the normal cost would be, okay? So we knew that was already in there. And then we knew that we'd get some money back, right? And that money, or that, or you saw those deductions helps cover then the premium we had to pay on its other side. So really, if things go well, you know, it's advantageous for us to go ahead and do that because then we save on some premium that normally the CMRs and the subcontractors charge us. But what it does is allows us to be more in control. So what you're seeing, so when you're seeing those deductions come though, there's also a side over here, which is we paid the premium several years ago in the beginning of this project to make sure that we're covered for like stop losses, right? So if all of a sudden something just horrible happens, we have insurance to cover that. So it's not really a boon, you know, as you mentioned, but it's what it's doing is it's allowing us to get the money back that the subcontractors built into their bids so that we can go ahead and use that to offset the expense over here that was for the premiums, et cetera.
Thank you. I always appreciate learning more from you, even on things that I think I understand, but it turns out when I'm talking, I don't really understand. So thanks for clearing that up. Sorry, Chris.
That's okay. We can go to the next slide where we have Windermere, seven change orders under $25,000 for a total of $9,000 there. And you see what we've spent on change orders at Windermere to date and doing a lot of, doing a lot of adjustments at Windermere that we learned from Wickliff. Because as you recall, those are the same buildings. And so some of our change orders are just things that we did at Wickliff to adjust that project. And so we're just doing the same at Windermere. And then the high school, I think we brought this every, every meeting, you know, the high school lumps change orders together. And so you see only change order 30 here listed and all the things that went into change order 30. And this is just some of the larger items that we pulled out. There's probably multiple smaller items as a part of change order 30. But you see there that in addition to some adds that we've had with plumbing revisions or architectural revisions, we've also had some deductions in flooring and casework and some acoustical panel removals. And so Rusili does theirs in lumps, and that's what you'll see there. And the total change to date at the high school is negative $588,000. A lot of that would relate back to Carol, that OSIP money that has already been given back to us from the phases of the project, the stadium phase and the other phases, so. So the next slide. This should look familiar. We've had this and it should be on repeat, but we're excited to get people in the buildings here, you know, as we finish up the high school, Windermere and Barrington. And before I jump into, before I jump into the pictures and just showing what those, how we're doing at those last three projects, I want to go off script here just for a second. And I know it's late, but I want to take a moment to make sure the board recognizes what we're about to undertake at the high school, Barrington and Windermere in a period of six days. We are going to be moving out of the high school starting Saturday, the 29th of that Memorial Day weekend and working straight through June 6th to get out of the way so the high school can be demolished. And that doesn't happen easily, and it doesn't happen without great people. And that great people, you know, we always say strength and team. And it starts with our teachers right now that are packing, but also delivering education to kids. And so we have, at all those three buildings, people, you know, teachers packing, staying later and packing. And then we have, you know, secretaries packing and doing their daily things. And I can't say enough about our entire classified staff and what they're doing behind the scenes to get ready for the 29th when we have to start moving out of the high school, Barrington and Windermere, or Wickliff, so it can be taken down. And between May 29th and June 6th, we're going to make that happen. And that doesn't happen without folks like Mike Abbott and Phil DeRoche and our entire operations and maintenance team, who, by the way, that same weekend are going to make sure we have an incredible graduation at Ohio State.
Oh, my God.
And do lots of other things. And so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize our entire classified staff, but also our teachers that are packing and doing great things right now. And I think it's important that we don't forget that in those six days and the excitement of trying to get out of the buildings and open new buildings. So with that, I will jump into just some awesome pictures here. This was, a lot of these were taken today, but this is the courtyard at Barrington. It's amazing how big of a difference a little greenery does. And so these trees were being planted today and in preparation for our fifth grade celebration at Windermere, I mean at Barrington, that's going to happen in that courtyard. And a special thanks to our city's building department for allowing us to do that in that courtyard. And I think the fifth graders are real excited, talking to Carla about that opportunity because, you know, they've been out in these trailers for the last year. And they're going to really use, for the first time, they'll be the first students to get to use this courtyard. And so we're excited for them to be able to have their celebrations in a safe way in that courtyard. The next picture is another picture of the same courtyard again, but again, those trees make an incredible difference. And that space between the old building and the new, and the new building is going to be an awesome space for kids and staff moving forward at Barrington. The next picture, I know it's a little dark, but Barrington obviously is making great progress. You know, all the ceiling tiles are in there. That is a picture from the main office area that's probably, I think, the teacher workroom. So you'll end up having a copier machine and other things in that area in the future, but the flooring's down, the drywall's painted, the ceiling's in. You see speakers. Barrington is just making great progress. The next picture, and these are three separate pictures here, just, you know, a finished corridor right there on the left-hand side. The center picture, and again, I don't think the color does it justice, but the tile behind those drinking fountains matches that green tile that is known for the outside of the building. So the character of Barrington, that 1939 building was captured indoors here with that tile behind those drinking fountains. And then that picture on the right, maybe say, what are we doing with this little picture window here? When we tore out the walls at Barrington, we found this amazing stonework behind the walls. And while we covered up a lot of it, we wanted to keep some of the character of it. And so we created this little spot here. It's almost like a showcase, but it's that, it's that stone that was probably laid by hand in the 1930s to build this building. And we just felt like it was going to be an opportunity for, you know, people to stand in front of that and talk about the history of Barrington. And so we, we made a little shift there instead of covering up the whole thing and created a little nook, I guess. When you go to the next slide, just a picture of a classroom at Barrington. So the garage door's in, again, all the ceiling tiles are in, you know, and as Andy mentioned, all that heavy work is done and you like to think that we're not going to have a lot of large change orders from the inside of the building, you know, when you're at this phase. Next picture. Again, just a small group room within a space where a garage door connects to classrooms. So again, a reminder, all the schools have these small group rooms, just a space for kids to go in in groups of three or four and work together in small groups. This is Windermere, second floor of Windermere. So you can see they're cleaning up there, getting ready for flooring. The ceiling grid is in, waiting for ceiling tiles to be dropped, you know, different paint colors, you know, standing out there, whether it be, you know, the ones up on the circle where the lights come down or framing the picture window right there. So Windermere is making great progress. The next picture at Windermere is... The next picture at Windermere is a different, a different learning neighborhood, because you see the green or the teal color in the ceiling there. So again, Windermere is feeling in a really good spot as they continue to work, work there. The gym at Windermere, so that is, just like Wickliffe, connects the gym and the music room. And so you can open up that, what will be a movable wall there, have all the kids in the gym for some type of presentation on a stage-like area there at Windermere, which is very, very similar to Wickliffe. Again, another learning neighborhood. You see the small group room there on your, on your right there, all formed in, the sink's in. Again, just cleaning up, getting ready for those final finishes, flooring and ceiling And the learning stairs. So as you know, we have learning stairs in a lot of our buildings in this new construction. And so, here's a set of learning stairs in the middle of the media center at Windermere. It should look very familiar, because Wickliffe's are, look the exact same, so. Now we move on to the high school. If you've been by the high school lately, a lot of the clear story glass has been going in. So this is the new main entrance, all framed up, ready for glass. And the bottom portion of your picture there is the, is the glass itself waiting to be installed. And so, I think very soon you will see, I think 99% of the glass for this building will be installed and done. And so that really frames up that front entrance there at the new high school. This is the pool. So this is, you're looking north at the pool, so standing in the south. The majority, I think there's three or four panels left of those glass panels there that surrounds the pool. Now that it's closed in, they'll start to work on the tile work and the other things in the pool, but really taking shape in the new aquatic center. This is the second floor of, of the high school at the south end, one of the learnings, and looking down into one of the learning commons. And so, you can see there, you know, ceiling grid is in, they'll be dropping ceiling tiles, the floor is in, you know, just finishes on the entire academic wing. When you walk through today, it's like the first floor is really close to just being cleaned and stay out of it. The second floor is almost there, and the third floor will be the last area that they finish. But all those finishes that, that really bring the, the building to life are, are happening right now, and Rusili is constantly cleaning and trying to shut off spaces for, you know, keep people out of it, keep those areas clean. In fact, we are starting just this week to move items from our ceramics and our wood shop. These are equipment items that, that are owner-provided, but contractor-installed, that we are getting over there. Kilns, those types of things are starting, starting to be given to Rusili for them to install. Again, another picture of a couple of classrooms. Ceiling tiles in on this floor, the lighting in, the doors are in, garage doors are in, base is in, just feeling like very much like finished space. This is the, the Performing Arts Center, and they are in the process of hanging the sound baffles in the ceiling that cover up all the catwalk areas. And they are working their way from the back of the theater forward towards the stage. And so eventually you will see that, that what they call a dance floor, that wooden scaffolding area come down as they work their way in hanging, hanging all these sound baffling items in the Performing Arts Center. Just a look down Golden Bear Boulevard, standing just outside the gym, to the right there, that, weird, weird is the wrong word, but that shaped window on the right is your media center.
Yes.
And sorry, that was the only word coming to me, but it's not weird, but it's just a different shape. It's not a square, it's not a circle. But either way, it's a wonderful view into our two-story media center, and those kind of mirrors, the, the learning stairs that are in that space. This is standing at the north end of the building, looking down Golden Bear Boulevard. So paint finishes are done, they're finishing, finishing up some drywall, they're getting ready for the terrazzo. They're supposed to be in the, in the coming weeks, starting the terrazzo install down Golden Bear Boulevard. And so, really making a lot of progress there at the high school. This is looking north to the front entrance, and so those are the stairs that will take you up to kind of the second level, where you can enter the Performing Arts Center. That end there will be full of glass and bring tons of natural light in. And I mention this every time we give a tour, and I should probably, you know, mention it here tonight, that, you know, we've seen a lot of pictures of Golden Bear Boulevard, and there's no lights in there yet. And it's been pretty rainy and cloudy lately, and there's still a lot of light in there. And so, the natural light that was purposefully designed for the space is just incredible. And it's one of the first things a lot of people notice when we, when we get people in there, including our students. Two more pictures, I believe. This is the field, what we're calling the fieldhouse. So this is, with the exception of one wall there you see at the end of that picture, is pretty much done. And they are, if you were to go there today, you wouldn't be able to see any of this floor. We have covered it up completely and protected it, because starting May 29th, all the stuff from the high school is coming right into that space as we wait for the final go-ahead to move it into its permanent home in, in spaces throughout the building. So we will have two moves. We'll move out of the high school into this space, everything, and then we'll move it again when we get final, final occupancy. And then this is the varsity gym, competition gym, the, the north side of the gym, the, where the bleachers are, they've just finished the structure itself, and now they'll start putting the seats in there. This will be the side where the scores table and the teams sit, and so that's why there's a larger space between that and what will be the main floor. On the other side, which will be our home side, it gets a little closer to the main floor, but the bleachers should be finished up in about the next three or four weeks. Questions?
Well, I was expecting to see branding beyond, behind the bleachers. Is that still to come?
Yep. So the branding package that, that we've been working with Ashley Graphics on is one of the last things we'll do. We need all the dust and the, and the stuff out of the way. And so, Amy White, who I know you're all familiar with, who led our legacy campaign, has also helped in a volunteer way lead this, lead this branding package and help organize it with me. And so, there will be graphics behind both the bleachers, the serve, lead, succeed down to Golden Bear Boulevard, all of our Hall of Fames, our educator Hall of Fame, our alumni Hall of Fame, the swimming all-American wall, all those things we, we plan to open the building with. There is a handful of items that we need to live in the building for a little while and determine the best spot for other branding things, but some of those main features that people saw in pictures are really going to be July before we start to install those, when we have an environment that is dust-free.
Thank you.
Thanks for the commentary. I was probably going to say, congratulations, I could have put the two together, where we have our, our staff, really, so we always, we call them, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we are now ready for our consent agenda.
Mr. Mackenzie, can I make?
We're not ready.
No, we are. I just, I just saw two typos in here, I want to get it fixed. Under items, consent agenda, item C, 1AC, where you list the various admin contracts under, it's funny because they're both here, but under Keith Pomeroy, that should be level seven, VII. And then under Tamaki, that should be level V.
I don't know. Should we vote on those properly tonight?
Could, speeches?
I'm just kidding. All right, so with the corrected agenda items as well as our addendum, addenda, so get to the right place. Consent agenda, I think it's nine B, C, and D. So can I get a, a motion for that, please?
Let me flip to how, how far that goes. The, these operations.
Correct.
I have a motion to, could you give me time to add to that?
Second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Geisfeld, call the roll, please. Mrs. Dries?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Mackenzie. That motion's carried. And now I need a motion to go into executive session, and if you will make that motion and read it, please.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
I'll second.
Let me just read that, if I may. That's to go into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G4, preparing for, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Mr. Geisfeld?
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
Jenny.
Jenny, thank you. Mrs. Dries?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
And Mr. Mackenzie.
Aye, motion carried.